Is there gonna be?
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of. I know.
One of my favorite things to do is sort of embarrass people. And so we have a very special birthday today. Mr. Lance Ferretto is 21 and in the house. Please give him. He hates it. He's so shy. He's like one of the shyest people I know. Anyway, he runs our incredible business department. Thank you. Happy birthday. Do you have any fun plans? Okay. All right. Also, I want to welcome Brian McCartel. He comes here from Eden. Stand up. I know you don't want to, but stand up. Yay! I'm really excited to work with you. Thank you so much. I'm honestly, it's gonna be great. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, I'm gonna start out by leading us in the pledge. I would love for the beautiful Casey Christensen to lead us in the pledge today. Where'd she go? She was... Oh, you're right there. You've moved a seat. Okay, go ahead. Take it away.
I'd like to delete this. This is the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where no one stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, ever to be unjustified.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, I'm gonna send it to you to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're gonna go ahead and call the roll for Wednesday, September 7th. Councilmember Breckus, absent at this time. Councilmember Dour.
Here.
Delgado.
Here.
Weber. Ward 5 is vacant. Reese.
Here.
Chivi.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Okay, thank you so much. Before we go into public comment, Madam Clerk, would you like to outline the process? I have something here. Or would you rather go to public comment? And then we can go into the process?
Yep, so we will go ahead and open general public comment now. We only have a few comments to... A few commenters here that are specifically signed up for general. And then we will go over the process. I'll come up and give you guys a process for today. And then we'll move into opening public comment for item B1, which is the item on today's agenda. And then we'll go into interviews from there. So we'll first do general public comment. Our first public commenter today is Mr. Mifsud, followed by Rod Cooper. Additionally, if you are in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment on general A3 public comment, please raise your hand at this time. And while Mr. Mifsud is making his way up here, I'll go ahead and read my disclosure. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action upon any matter not agendized. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there's disruptive behavior and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Mr. Mifsud, if you'd like to start now, you're more than welcome.
All right, good morning, Jerry.
My name is your worst nightmare. You know, Dr. King said, anybody who's a witness to racism and does nothing is a racist. And what the city council was a witness was to one of their members, a city council person, we'll say, that wrongfully had me thrown out of City Hall because my shirt was open. There is no dress code. I heard what you said earlier. That's a bunch of baloney. My shirt is still open. Throw me out. You also had the nerve to assign a security guard to go to the city clerk's office to Cassie, who's no longer working there, and tell Cassie to call me up and tell me I was barred from City Hall. For six months. This is four months into that. I dare you to throw me out now. It's four months into it. I'm supposed to be barred. You know why you're not? Because you tried to bully me. And like I said last time, you can't bully a pit bull. You like that, don't you? I used to like you, you know? I felt all this charm. And you're very charming, but you can't use political seduction like that. Though I remember the first picture I took with you. I squatted down and you looked up at me and said, "Are you trying to make me look short?" If I stood up or lay, you'd look short. You know, for the highest person in Reno, that's highly regarded. You shouldn't have that kind of complex. Now, I know you people don't have to listen to even look. That's kind of rude because we're just up here for a comment. We really don't need you here. But I'm told I can't direct any of my comments to you directly because that's wrong. I can't give you a compliment because that's wrong. But for five months, I was up here complimenting and criticizing and never once told this until recently, when it seems like a collaborative effort to try to silence me. We were supposed to work out a deal. Me, you, and the city attorney. And what did the city attorney do? He pushed the snooze button like he normally does and he went to sleep. Oh, I tell you, you people mess with the wrong guy. Because what this is gonna end up doing, ended up going to court or the court of public opinion. So I called upon my fellow seniors. Vote... Don't vote Hillary out. Vote for George Eddie Lorton, an honest businessman that will honor his oath. You've been the mayor for 10 years. That's a monarchy. You want four more? That's 14 years. You have three terms. Do the math. Three times four is 12. Two years into your term, if you should win, you should resign. I suggest that you should turn in your resignation to the Attorney General today because you're on your way to the big goodbye. That thrift store that you own, imagine a high-end thrift store. That's a contradiction in terms.
All right, Mr. Mifsud, thank you so much.
Thank you. He who laughs last, lasts longest.
All right, Madam Mayor. With that, we have no additional public commenter. Mr. Rod Cooper has asked to be moved to item B1, and so we'll go ahead and accommodate that request. So we're gonna go ahead and close general public comment.
And furthermore.
And we'll be moving into opening item B1, which is discussion. Thank you. We're moving into item B1, which is the discussion and potential direction to staff regarding the interview process, interview of finalists, and possible appointment of the Reno City Council Ward 5 vacancy.
Madam Clerk, I think we need to go to item A4. I'm gonna ask the council for...
Thank you for keeping me on track.
...approval of the agenda. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, back to you, Madam Clerk.
Always juggling. Good morning, mayor and council. So we're moving on to item B1 today, which is the interview and selection of our Ward 5 vacancy. Again, just for reference for those of you in the audience and those of you watching publicly, on August 12th, this body met and decided between a special election and an appointment process. The decision was made by the Reno City Council to move forward with an appointment process to avoid a nine-to-10-month vacancy period for the Ward 5 constituency. After that point, we did move into an application process. So August 15th through the 19th, my office, the Reno City Clerk's office, accepted applications from 36 residents of Ward 5, at which time on Sept... What day did we do that? August 24th, this body narrowed that selection of 36 down to three. Last week, on the 30th and 31st, we held two public meet-and-greet sessions for the constituents of Ward 5 or just constituents of the city of Reno to come out, engage with those three finalists, ask questions. It was very successful. We had a great turnout and a lot of really good connections were made during those meetings. And then today, September 7th, the job for each of you is to, A, determine a process, which is what I will go over next, interview the finalists, and then hopefully we will be able to make a selection and appointment and then swear that person in to start their duties as soon as possible. So the recommendation for today is the following process. We will go ahead and allow... What my recommendation would be that we're going to bring the finalists down in alphabetical order by way of last name. At that point, they would be given a five-minute opening statement period. Each council member and the mayor would be able to ask one question. We would ask that that question is the same across the body just to ensure that there's equal question or the same kind of question format asked each candidate. Follow-up questions, we'll be doing one round per council member if necessary for follow-up questions based on the last council member's question. The finalists will be given three minutes to answer the questions being asked of the body. And then they would be additionally given a five-minute closing statement period. Following that, it should take no longer than one hour per candidate is really kind of the timeline that we're trying to stay within. At that point, we would go into deliberations where the council members would go ahead and negotiate and ask questions amongst each other to then move into the selection process. The candidates are sequestered at this moment, so they're upstairs in a private room. None of them will be able to hear the questions being asked so that none of them have an unfair bias or an opportunity to come up with answers ahead of time. And so when we call them down, they will be escorted down to chambers. The questions will be asked and then we'll actually just have those that have already participated stay in the room because they don't need to sit up in a silent room by themselves any longer. So if you are good with the process that's presented?
Yes. Madam Mayor? Go ahead. Yeah, just to clarify and just kind of put this to bed. Do we have... We all have eligibility requirements to run, right?
Correct.
And could you just go over what those are for us?
I'm actually gonna let Mr. Hall go over them.
Okay, just think it's good to get that out there and kind of deal with that.
Yes, Councilmember Dour. The candidate has to live within the ward 30 days prior to the declaration of candidacy.
Okay.
And according to the records that I reviewed specifically, driver's license information, all candidates meet the requirement and they have filled out an affidavit stating that they do meet the requirement.
Fantastic. Thank you. And that's the only requirement, right?
Correct.
That is the only...
Well, you have to be a registered voter. You have to... Yes, you have to be over 18.
Over 18.
You have to be a registered voter and you have to live within the ward. So all of those three things are double-checked when those applications were filed with my office.
Do you have to be a registered voter like that 30 days before or any moment before?
You just have to be a registered voter, active with the registrar. Yep, correct.
Got it. And then in that ward, I guess, to your point. You have to have residency 30 days before. Let you clarify. Thank you so much. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right.
Okay, so we're good with that process?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move into public comment. Okay, our first public commenter is Rod Cooper, followed by Amanda Vosco, followed by Ken... Oh, Kevin Weiski.
Good morning, Mr. Cooper.
Hello there. Good morning, council members and mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to stand here before you today. My name is Rod Cooper. I reside at 5150 Rio Pinar in Reno. And I'm the retired Vice President/Regional Manager for Granite Construction. I'm here today to speak on behalf of this agenda item. And I've read the bio and the resumes for all three of the candidates coming before you and you really have some good choices. However, I am here today to talk in behalf of Kathleen Taylor. Now, I read a comment pasted on the wall of the elevator as I rode up or down, whichever direction I was going today, I went both. And it says, "Conversation creates unity." And how much better could that be of a motto for what you're gonna go through today? Again, as I said, I'm here to support Kathleen. And she has demonstrated unity in her work over the years. While being the Vice President and Regional Manager for Granite, we worked on two major projects in the city and for the city. The first being the Reno Retract Project. And Kathleen facilitated critical community engagement in downtown, which is Ward 5, with multiple stakeholders and competing priorities being the residents, business owners, special events, and elected officials. Even though this was 20 years ago, Kathleen still maintains these types of positive relationships today. It was a controversial project, but the community outreach was successful and respectful and well-received. It was actually award-winning. Kathleen spent hours and hours knocking on doors of businesses and residents daily to receive feedback and communicate project goals and operations. And there were no surprises. Again, conversation creates unity. Where I eat, he goes through downtown Reno. Granite had a design-build project and Kathleen, again, was the Public Information Officer for that project as well. She developed Business Patronage Program during construction to support business. It was the first in the region. She communicated, engaged with stakeholders throughout Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County to minimize impacts. She facilitated discussions between Granite, businesses, residents, special event coordinators, EMS, to reduce impacts and improve operations and efficiencies. She communicated the schedules with the city of Reno, and again, there were no surprises. After working with Kathleen on these and other projects, I appreciate her core values and integrity, which I'm confident she'll bring to the council and the city of Reno. And I'm certain you would appreciate working with her as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amanda Vosco, followed by Kevin Weiski, followed by Gary Cecil.
Good morning, Reno City Council. My name's Amanda Vosco. Today, I'm here to show my individual support for Elliot Malin in filling the Ward 5 vacancy. Elliot was the only candidate which reached out to me and my colleagues. We're all very involved UNR students. This gesture meant a lot to us as UNR students are a significant part of Ward 5, that interact with Reno City Government on a daily basis. Elliot conversed and listened to us regarding campus safety and the surrounding area safety, student struggles with housing insecurity and food insecurity among UNR students. I thank him for being receptive and attentive. And regardless of who fills this vacancy, I hope that these conversations about students' needs are continued among council members and especially among our Ward 5 member. Thank you so much for your time.
And Amanda is a future senator. Future mayor?
That's the hope.
Senator?
Maybe.
President?
We'll see.
There you go. I love it. Nice to see you, girls, by the way.
Yes, nice to see you too.
Kevin Weiski, followed by Gary Cecil, followed by Lena Tanner.
Madam Mayor, council members, good morning. Kevin Weiski for the record. And it still is so different being on this side of the dais than that side.
I was gonna say, familiar face.
Thank you.
From the Planning Commission.
With that being said, I am here as a retired planning commissioner. I have served my 12 years and wished I could have gone longer. But with that 12 years, also came a tenure with Kathleen Taylor. And I would like to express as Vice Chair/Chairman both Reno City Planning Commission and also the regional... Thank you, Devin. Regional Planning Commission is serving both and serving with Kathleen. That I always found Kathleen to be very well-prepared. She was always on top of the conversation and the items of the agenda that were before us. Kathleen also did a fantastic job and I have watched her since then, since she has come back on to the Reno Planning Commission, following Robert's Rule of Law. There is decorum, there is law that you know as well as I do that must be followed in order to make the decisions that you make and that future councils will also make. And that's very important. As a resident of this city, I want my council to follow the rules of law. I don't want them expanding and going out into areas that get challenged in court, although Mr. Hall does a nice job when he has to go. And I've always appreciated the fact that our planning commission did our best to stay out of courts. That says a lot. And that says a lot for Kathleen. It says a lot for what you are asking a candidate to do in stepping up right now midterm and taking off and running. And that, I believe, is what Kathleen can do. Also, one of my other professional duties here in town since leaving the Planning Commission is I'm an executive officer of the Associated General Contractors. And the Associated General Contractors of Northern Nevada wanted me to come before you with a positive message that they support Kathleen Taylor also. With that, Madam Mayor, thank you for your time. Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. And it's so nice to see you and thank you for your service. I can't believe you served for 12 years there. That went by like that.
Kevin, thank you for your service and also give our regards to Patty. I know that Dress for Success is happening on October 21st. It's a great event and we have a table this year, so my colleagues and I will hope to attend. So give Patty our best. Thank you so much.
Gary Cecil, followed by Lena Tanner, followed by Kurt Gottschalk.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council members, Mr. Thornley. As I was at the August 25th meeting, I'm here today on behalf of a group of engaged Ward 5 residents. And they are, again, Sunny Allen from downtown, Jill Flansroy from downtown, Carly Borshid from Verdi, Pam McNeil from Somerset, Ken McNeil from Somerset, Art Rangel from downtown, and Gary Cecil for downtown. And thank you, Councilmember Weber, to come up and thank us for our input in looking through all of the 36 candidate materials. That meant a lot to us. Thank you. Last week, we had the pleasure of doing our own Zoom interviews with your three finalists. Elliot, Alex, and Kathleen already agreed to be interviewed separately. They came well-prepared and open to answering some tough but fair questions and we're very grateful to each of them. It was... They were rich sessions. They also allowed us to engage in a positive give-and-take that helped our group both know them better and to imagine them as our council member. Madam Mayor, you rightfully decried the shortage of respectful public dialogue. I agree with you. I can assure you that our exchanges with the three would have made you smile. They were substantive and they were pleasant and very productive. That said, this accelerated selection process has kind of felt like going through a drive-through. We will be looking forward to the 2024 election. Will it be more like dine and get a restaurant you've had time to thoroughly research? Our group has made it clear to each finalist that whoever the council selects, we want to engage with them to be positively working for the good of Ward 5 residents. And the person you select will be hit with a tsunami. Only each of you really know what it's like. But we are committed to helping that person be successful and we hope they take us up on our offer of help. We're still grappling with an acronym for our purpose, but we did create a shared email space in which we define ourselves as a group of engaged Ward 5 residents who value collective, respectful, and positive dialogue aimed at contributing to our ward and assisting our council member. And if there are any other Ward 5 residents that would like to meet with us, and I'm gonna shamefully publicize ourselves here, please call 775-420-5185 and leave a message. And two of our membership are on the Ward 5, so please come any first Tuesday in the month and... Oh, sorry, second Tuesday in the month at 5:30 and we can meet with you then. And we wish the finalists the very best of luck today and we look forward to working closely with whomever your final selection is. Thank you very much.
Gary, I just want to commend you for your work. It was so good that, I mean, it's hard to believe. We've done this three times now. This will be our third time. So I loved it so much that that would be part of the process moving forward. Hopefully, we don't have to do this again.
Yes, really.
But it was so good and so helpful and informative. Thank you for doing that because that's how, moving forward, we would do this process.
Well, you have three very good candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lena Tanner, followed by Kurt Gottschalk, followed by Jeff Hale.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Hall, nice to see you. My name is Lena Tanner. I'm a lifelong Reno resident and a small business owner here in Reno of a law and government affairs practice. I actually have been advising the city on sustainability matters for the... In regards to the Public Utilities Commission for a few years now with Suzanne. She's great. I apologize for my voice. I also work for Bernie Man, so it's not whiskey and cigarettes. It's actually fly dust. So forgive me. I'm here today to voice my support for the appointment of Kathleen Taylor to your council. Kathleen's resume speaks for itself. I'm not really here to talk about that. I think she's clearly the candidate with the most experience and the one who can get up from the proverbial ground... Get from the ground running. What I'm here to talk about is the fabulous human that Kathleen is and I'm gonna get a little teary about it. Candidly, Kathleen's been one of my closest friends for about almost 20 years now. And the reason why is because on probably my first worst bad day, when I learned that my son, my six-week-old baby, had what we now know as terminal cancer, I met Kathleen when she was the Executive Director of Angel Kiss Foundation. And she took that foundation and merged that into what is now the Nevada... Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation, which is really, you know, the sole, permanent organization for families like mine in the region. If there's one word that I could use to describe Kathleen is that she's fierce. She's fierce in love, in parenting, in friendship, in work, in charity. So through her work with Nevada... With Angel Kiss, we became good friends. We raised our kids together. Our kids were of the same age. They love each other. We have been through divorces, the death of my child, through being single mothers, through leaving somewhat cushy jobs and starting our own practices and all of those setbacks and triumphs that those bring. And I think one of my fondest memories of Kathleen and Katie Bonney will probably correct me when Kathleen, I'm not gonna say canceled Christmas, but altered Christmas for her tweens when she felt that they were too spoiled and did not appreciate Christmas enough. So all presents were canceled and she took them with the Sheriff's Department down to the motels on Fourth Street and handed out presents. And I believe, and Katie can correct me, that every Christmas since, it's been about experiences and not presents. And that's who she is. Kathleen is a fierce advocate for her clients, for her friends. Kathleen is a fierce advocate for her clients, for her friends, for her family, and she will be for her constituents should you choose to appoint her. There's a scene in Ted Lasso, really quick, and I hope you all watch it, because it's better than therapy, where Keely, the model who is famous for almost being famous, secures her friendship with Rebecca, the team owner, in front of the red carpet, adjusts her, stands back, and says behind the photographers, "Ah, look at her! She's fierce!" I'm omitting the F-word, but I think that you'll get the point. Kathleen is who you want in a foxhole, and I think she's who you want on this dais. Thank you.
Lena, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You've been through so much adversity.
Thank you for being there with us.
Was it fun? I just wanna know, was it fun?
It was miserable. It was so hot and so dusty. I left for the first time ever before the man burned.
Wow.
I couldn't handle it. It was horrible. But I was there for a week and a half, because I work there, so I looked cool with the.
All right, well, good.
Thank you so much.
Kurt Gotchak, followed by Jeff Hale, followed by Rebecca Goff.
Morning. My name is Kurt Gotchak. I am a long-term Ward Five resident, 37-plus years. So I have a good idea of what goes on in Ward Five. I was also a member of the NAB until I got termed out, Vice Chair numerous times, Chair numerous times as well. I spoke here last month in regards to your process of appointing or election. Though I do not agree with your decision, that's what we're living with. I think all three candidates have excellent backgrounds. Alex is strong and involved. Kathleen is highly motivated in various areas, government agencies, infrastructure and planning. Elliot Malin has extensive government interactions, not focusing on one particular area. His numerous contacts, because of his business, I think extends more to the council than either of the other two candidates. Being able to communicate with them over the years, understanding how that communication has to go is what Elliot doesn't have to learn. He already has that in his background. I think one of the greatest attributes that I can give to Elliot in a short period of time in interacting with him is that skill of listening. Listening is an art. It requires concentration and focus. And Elliot has already put forth some of his ideas of what he's going to be doing, meeting with the residents of the community, not just going to a NAB meeting, but reaching out, as he did on Labor Day, by having a mini-town hall at a coffee shop off of Las Prisas, where he invited a lot of the members of Ward Five to show up. And we were there, interacting with him, learning more about him, learning more about what the community was looking for, not just our opinions. I think beyond an individual's education, life experience is very important. In reading each candidate's resume online, you can see that they're all have different variety of how they've been involved in life. I think Elliot's involvement in government is the greatest attribute that we can give back to our community. Someone who can hit the ground running, may not know all the intricacies at the city level, but in the county and the state level, he's already very well-versed. And I think his expertise will lend itself to a better city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Jeff Hale, followed by Rebecca Goff, followed by Alexis Motorex.
Morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm here today to speak in support of Kathleen Taylor. I probably know Kathleen better than anybody, because we're married for eight years. Raise two kids together, raising kids while you're married is tough, but doing it while you're single is really tough. And while also trying to build a career and a business at the same time is very difficult, and that's something that she did, and it's a testament to her strength and her dedication and character. Kathleen, besides, being a dedicated mother is hardworking and dedicated to helping others. She cares deeply about Reno and has worked to make it a better place. She started here leading a nonprofit that helped families struggling to care for kids with cancer. She also tracked our kids down to feed the homeless during the holidays and provided meals for the Delivering with Dignity program. She also spent her weekends working on community projects, such as gathering artists to paint a mural on a plane-block wall along Mayberry, all examples of how she's worked with the community to improve the city. Something that people don't know, Mr. Cooper alluded to earlier, she's been in a unique position to play a key role in some major infrastructure projects that have changed and are changing the face of Reno. She worked closely with the RTC as contractors, engineers, and community members affected by construction, the Midtown Complete Street project, the Fourth and Praetor Complete Street and BRT project. In this role, she worked with both RTC, city staff, the engineers, contractors, and property owners to inform them project activities and work to meet the needs of people impacted by the construction of these projects. She performs the same services to other public agencies within Truckee Meadows, including NDOT, to help navigate the difficult times that could come with construction of needed improvements that may impact their business or their livelihood. Both of those projects that I mentioned significantly work to improve the character of those corridors. Working with property owners that are not only happy about losing access, as I mentioned, impacted by road closure, finding a way to communicate with contractors and maintain a co-parent relationship and friendship with me can be challenging. But that's what she does and maintains, and she maintains and fosters relationships, a critical skill set demanded by people represented by Ward Five. She decided to become more active in community leadership and run for city council about 10 years ago. And while unsuccessful at the time, it made her more determined to work to make the community better. She was able to lead, land a seat on the Planning Commission, where she worked to engage with community builders and city staff to understand best practices in community development, ensure that beneficial projects were able to move forward as efficiently as possible. Kathleen has worked very hard for her kids, her career, Reno residents, stakeholders, to make their lives better and appreciate what they've done, what they have, so it is taken care of for the next generation. That's why I urge you to support Kathleen today. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Rebecca Goff.
Where did you get the X coming out? That was very nice.
Followed by Alexis Motorex, followed by Sandra Newman, Newmark Stevens.
Hi, good morning, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm speaking today in support of Alex Goff, who I have the extreme privilege of being his wife. I've known him for 14 years, and the first thing that really struck me about him, from the first moment we spoke, I knew he was exceptional, and I wanted to know more. In fact, the first time I met him was at an event, and it was like intermission. And we talked, and I was just like, this guy's amazing. And then I couldn't find him after the show, and then he didn't call me for a week. I was so upset. I thought he didn't like me, but he did. And almost 14 years later, here we are. So I have the privilege of knowing him deeply. You know his accomplishments, his achievements. You know all the great things that he's done for our community, or he's done for our country. But I'm here to talk about who he is in the quiet moments. Not only is he whip-smart, literally smarter than me, smarter than I could ever be. He's a kid that barely graduated high school, but just a few weeks ago graduated from an Ivy League school with his master's degree. That's a big accomplishment that he did on his own. Nobody told him when he was younger that he was anything. In fact, he had teachers literally tell him that he was worthless, and he would be nothing in this world. And statistically speaking, coming from a single mother in the deep south, he should be dead or in jail, but he's not. He's here, and he's been called to serve. At home, we talk about all kinds of things, but we talk about the city. I mean, he talks about housing and zoning and honestly, things that are beyond what I can understand, because it's just not my area of interest, frankly. But he's really into this stuff, and he, in his free time, his free time, is looking into these issues in the city, looking into these issues in our state. And he's coming up with ideas how he can make it better, long before he even had this opportunity. This is the kind of work he's been doing at home in the quiet moments of our life. He's also extremely kind and compassionate. Despite all the things that he does, he still has time to volunteer at the shelter with me. He still grieves with me when I lose a patient or when I have to make a difficult decision at work. He's excited when I tell him about exciting adoption stories. You know, he really does care about these animals as much as I do. And to me, a person who cares about animals is a really good person and the kind of person that you would want leading your community. And honestly, if you see him with our dog at home, she's like our baby. We weren't blessed with children, and so we have our dog. And the way he loves her and dotes on her and cares about her, and he'll probably be mortified that I'm sharing this, is very touching just to see the kind of person that he is in his day-to-day life. So I know that he would be an excellent representative of our ward, and he would be an excellent leader, because I see his leadership day in and day out when he's not doing it for show. You know, when he's just living and existing and being who he is, and who he is is exceptional. And I know that he would work together with everyone on this city council, with the members of our community, to continue to make Reno not only the biggest, but the best little city in the world. Thank you.
Love it. Great job.
Alexis Motorex, followed by Sandra Newmark Stevens, followed by Katie Hale.
Good morning. My name is Alexis Motorex, and I'm here today representing myself and to encourage the appointment of Kathleen Taylor to fill the vacancy in Ward Five. I've had the good fortune of knowing and working with Kathleen for just over a decade. I first met her early in 2012 when my son was diagnosed with leukemia. Kathleen was on the board of the Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation and was part of the warm embrace my family received during that terrible time. I later learned that she had previously served as the Executive Director and was instrumental in the transition from Angel's Kiss Foundation to the more regional reach of the Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation. Her involvement in this organization, one that helps so many families in their darkest hours, is a large part of why it is so successful today. I then worked with Kathleen at a local PR firm where I got to know her better. I saw firsthand her integrity and work ethic, her collaborative approach to solving problems, her willingness to admit when she was wrong, her willingness to listen and include new ideas. And something else I admire, in every situation, she uses kindness, humor, and her infectious laugh to bring people together. I now work adjacent to Kathleen in the construction industry. And my role with the AGC and hers as the City of Reno and Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commissioner, a past member of BFAC and a communications consultant on large transportation projects, our paths cross frequently. I feel fortunate to be able to call her a friend and a colleague. You had several quality candidates apply to fill this vacancy and have narrowed the field to three outstanding options. I don't envy your position in having to choose, but between Kathleen's years of experience in and around the city's operations and her dedication and commitment to making this community better, it seems to me she's the clear choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job.
Sandra Newmark Stevens, followed by Katie Hale, followed by Jack O'Quinn.
Good morning, Mayor Schivie and council members. Thank you for having all of us.
Sandra, if you would turn the microphone so that it's facing you, that'd be great. Thank you.
Is that better?
You're gonna have to get right up in there.
My name, my name is Sandra Newmark Stevens, and I'm an attorney here in Reno. My husband and I practice out of an office in Ward Five, and we own a home in Ward Five. So we're very, very interested in who is going to be representing us. You all have a tough day today. You've chosen three candidates that have presented you with diverse resumes, and they are all very, very well-appointed. The skill sets that are listed on each of their resumes are very different, however. I am here to give my support to Kathleen Taylor. I first met her 20 years ago when I was on the board of the Angel Kiss Foundation. And at that point in time, Angel Kiss was a very new organization. We had had an executive director before that didn't work out, and we were looking for somebody who was energetic, who was personable, who was a self-starter, who was a communicator, and had leadership skills. We interviewed very many people, and Kathleen just popped out as the right person for the job. She worked with us for four years, and by the time she left and turned over her responsibilities to her successor, the organization was up and running. We had name recognition. We were serving children who, and their families, who were suffering the devastating diagnosis of cancer. There was money in the bank. Kathleen fundraised for us. She wrote grants. She organized a cadre of volunteers who actually helped her in the office, because initially she was a one-woman show and did everything. She really built the organization to a place where, at the point where she left, it could be turned over to another person, and it could move forward. Since her experience with Angel Kiss, she has moved on in her professional life, and she's gained a wealth of experience as the owner of her own business, Taylor Made Solutions. She's gained practical education in management and negotiating contracts and solving complex, strategical problems, and in dealing on a day-to-day basis with a diverse set of stakeholders in the community where most of her work has taken place. Kathleen's interest and concern for the City of Reno is evidenced not only by her involvement professionally, but by her work on the City of Reno Planning Commission and by her willingness to spend the hours it took to graduate from the Reno Citizens Institute, where she learned more about the complexity of city government. As a resident of downtown Reno now, she has a vested interest in what needs to be done to maintain the best of the central city. And she knows what issues need to be addressed, but she also knows what is best about the City of Reno. I remain close friends with her over all these years, and I think that Kathleen is the right person for the job. I hope you agree with me.
Thank you so much. Sandra.
Katie Hale, followed by Jack O'Quinn, followed by Joanna O'Quinn.
Hello. Good morning, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Katie Hale, and I would like to start off by saying thank you to all of you for being here today and allowing me to speak in support of my mother, Kathleen Taylor. Every time I have been asked who my role model is, I've said my mom. I know this may seem very cliche and an easy role model to choose. However, she is not my role model because she is my mom. She is my role model because of her character, her will, and her kindness. She has not only taught me compassion, but has also demonstrated her compassion in Reno's biggest little community every day. She gives whatever she has whenever she has it, even when she doesn't have much. I have watched her raise two amazing children, myself included, start her own successful small business, all while being passionately involved in Reno's community. I have seen her donate, volunteer, and get to know those who are less fortunate than her. I have seen her have conversations with people who don't have a home and be genuinely interested in their experiences and be eagerly willing to help. She is the type of person whose intentions are only pure, and the only satisfaction she gains in helping people is seeing them get better. A lot of politicians claim that they want to clean up the homeless people, clean up the streets, and that they want to make these big, grand-doze policy changes for the good of the people. And really, they're only trying to fill their own pockets. The great thing about my mom, though, is that she's not a politician, but a person, a really kind-hearted, intelligent, and caring person. She is honest, and she applied for this position for the right reasons, the reasons being to better Reno and make it an attractive place to visit and live in. I have seen the hard work and dedication that she has put into raising children and growing a business, nonetheless, and the hard work that she has put into applying for this position. And I truly believe that she will be a public servant and that she will live by the words, "By the people, for the people." As I said before, she is not my role model because she is my mother. However, I am truly honored to call her my mom. I am proud of who she is and who she has taught me to be. When I grow up, I want to be just like her. I want to have her compassion, intelligence, dedication. I want to have her compassion, intelligence, dedication, and drive to make things better than they were before. Maybe not her red hair, because I'm not sure if I could pull that off. But I definitely do want to embody her character. Anyways, thank you for letting me brag about my mom, and I hope that my insight as someone who has known Kathleen for almost 20 years allows you to come to the conclusion that she is absolutely the best person to, to fill the Ward Five seat. Thank you.
I'm sure she'd be very proud of you. Nice job.
Jack O'Coin, followed by Joanna O'Coin, followed by Casey Christiansen.
All right. Cool. Hi, my name is Jack O'Coin. First off, I want to thank you all for listening to me today and allowing me to speak. I'm a student at UNR, and I've known Kathleen for a while, but more recently, I have been luckily blessed to be able to work under an internship under her for the past month. Yeah, before my internship, I didn't really know Kathleen, so working with her so closely has allowed me to kind of see who the person she really is. What I first noticed about while working with Kathleen is her compassion and love for what she does. She always seems to have a smile on her face, no matter how crazy I drive her with sending in work late. She always has a smile on her face, and no matter how tough the work may seem. And that's why I think Reno needs another great person on this council that does everything with a great mood and work ethic. Another thing about Kathleen that I respect is her love for Reno. Her work is focused on bettering Reno, and for, for one, I am a big Reno fan, so me and her really click together really well. I love seeing my city grow and something better. I love seeing my city grow into something better, and Kathleen will provide a better future. She's a great boss, and she will be a great representative on this council as Ward Five. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Joanna O'Coin, followed by Casey Christiansen, followed by Rochelle Liberson.
All right. Is it still morning? Good morning, Madam Mayor and council members. For the record, I am John O'Coin, and thank you for allowing me to speak with you. I am here too to support Kathleen Taylor, candidate for Ward Five. As a third generation of Addan, and one who is now raising a fourth generation, I am, my community is very important to me. I'm incredibly proud of our city, and I value the hard work, the grit, the tenacity, and dedication that it takes to represent our beautiful community. That is why I am in support of Kathleen Taylor to represent Ward Five. I've known Kathleen for about 10 years. We met through our girls' soccer team. We were the parents on the sideline, chatting, solving the world's problems while our girls ran their hearts out on the field. By the end of game one, Kathleen's commitment to our community was indisputable. And throughout her 10 years of friendship and the end of our girls' soccer career, Kathleen's commitment and tenacious devotion to our community has never wavered. She's a fierce advocate for small business, shaming me for my department store purchases, reminding me to shop local and support our neighbors. She is a voice of reason and advocacy for the betterment of our community. She is someone who walks the walk. Kathleen is in the community and having those brave and needed conversations. She regularly meets with our homeless community and does so without judgment nor preconceived notions. Her mind and heart are open, and she is solution-oriented. She's generous to a fault, both financially and with her time. She doesn't wait for a need. She seeks out the opportunity to help. As an elementary school principal, I always tell my students and my staff that we represent one another. That when they are out in the community, they represent me, and when I am out in the community, I represent them. I am proud to call Kathleen my friend and I am, and a valued neighbor, but I would be honored to have Kathleen represent me in Ward Five. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. I've been to your school. You do a remarkable job.
Thank you.
Remarkable.
Casey Christiansen, followed by Rochelle Liberson, followed by Matthew Lakoff.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Casey Christiansen, and I'm here representing myself and my business Soup Restaurant in Reno, Nevada, and also as a Ward Five member as well. I live in Ward Five. So I, I have the pleasure of knowing Kathleen. For quite a few years, I got to work with her when I served as the president of the Midtown District during the Virginia Street Project. As we all know, that was quite a, quite a challenging project and had a lot of interesting, interesting feats of bringing people together to kind of solve a problem, find a solution. And I was so incredibly impressed with Kathleen and how she met with each person and found solutions for each person. It wasn't a blanket response. I think that's the beauty of who she is as an individual, is she is very caring, very willing to listen. Again, there's been so many beautiful things said about her, and I can only support those as well, but her ability to listen and truly care, I think, is top of that list as well. She's shown so much of her character and quality of an individual, which I believe all we're, all we have to do together is try to find solutions. And, and the fact of her willingness to try to work with people is paramount. It's really huge, and I think is a benefit for the city council as well. Having people that can see eye to eye or try to find a solution. She worked tirelessly with her commitment and love for our community. It was really beautiful to watch her willingness to go and meet with each individual business and think creatively to find solutions. I think sometimes with such a huge task that we had ahead of us, it was really key for her commitment to all of that. She loves our community. She is, she is authentic too, which I think is really huge for me, and especially as a, what you all form with our city council, that authenticity is, is really, really important. And I, I see that in her, and I trust her, and believe that her intentions are true, and what she's trying to do is just to support our community and to see it continue to grow and thrive and, and do better each day. Her experience, of course, speaks for itself, working with, you know, council and working with the commission, and then, again, multitudes of people, which I think you understand how many people you have to work with in this position and be able to listen and understand. So again, my, my biggest support for her, and I truly believe she would be such a benefit to what you're doing, and then I think the growth that you could all achieve together would be really beautiful. So thank you again for having me, and, and you have a, a hard task ahead of you, but again, my support lies with Kathleen Taylor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Casey. And for those of you that don't know, she owns one of the best restaurants in Midtown Soup. I just have to give you a big shout out. One of my favorite places. Amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Rochelle Liberson, followed by Matthew Lakoff, followed by Morgan Sherman.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Kuhn and now Liberson. Friendly face to some of you guys. I'm just here today as a new Ward Five resident, but I just want to show my support for Elliot Lakoff. He's done a lot in all areas of the government and the community, but in one specific area, in the Jewish community, he's a large advocate, always making sure that whatever is, you know, whatever issues may arise, he wants to be there in support. And as we head into Rosh Hashanah, which is the holiday that's coming up in three weeks, the Jewish holiday, so we say Shana Tova, sweet New Year. It's actually not the New Year for the Jewish calendar. It's a time of, you know, welcoming sweetness into our year and kind of heading off our year in the right state of mind. And I think that it's beautiful that we have this opportunity to appoint a councilperson for Ward Five in these weeks. You know, we need a strong leader ahead. And I think you guys are all amazing. You're supporting the body, which is Reno. And I look forward to, you know, either Elliot or whichever candidate you find best to really head Ward Five and lead it in a good and right direction. Thank you.
All right. Great job. Nice to see you.
Matthew Lakoff, followed by Morgan Sherman.
Hi there. My name is Matt Lakoff. I'm a student at UNR, and I'm also a student leader in multiple of the UNR organizations, including multiple of the Jewish and the LGBT-related organizations on campus. So I actually helped found several of these organizations. So with that being said, I'd like to give my endorsement for Elliot Malin. I've known Elliot for like three years now, and ever since I first met him, I have been struck by how engaged he is with the ward and with the university in particular. Elliot was an alumnus of UNR, or he is an alumnus. And while he was at the university, he was very, very engaged with ASUN, with the Jewish life on campus, with civic engagement. And he helped found a lot of like really important organizations that have only been able to exist because of his hard work and his leadership. And since graduating, he's remained engaged. He's really been a mentor for a lot of our students. He frequently actually gets interviewed by Nevada Fit Mentor, or Nevada Fit students when they're first entering the university, because he's just one of these great leaders that comes from Reno. And in terms of his character, he's a problem solver. He always makes time to listen whenever there's an issue. Even though he's incredibly busy, he always finds time to listen and find a solution. And he does this not just for people that he personally has a relationship with. He would pretty much stop time to help anyone who needed help. And I, as a leader on campus, have frequently pointed students in his direction, because there's a lot of civic issues that students are having to deal with, including housing insecurity, safety, and just trying to navigate the world as new voters. He's a fierce supporter of free speech and of voter rights. And he, as a, currently going to law school, he's really learning how all of these things shake out to be able to apply the Constitution correctly. He's not a businessman. He's not here to represent the interests of, you know, financial superpowers in, in our ward. He's here to support the people. And I think that's why I can say on behalf of UNR students that he is the right choice. So thank you for your time.
Great job, Matthew. You sound like a future senator, right?
Uh, you know, that'll be, that'll be a future me question.
I love it. Nice job.
Morgan Sherman.
Good morning, Mayor and council. How are you? So I am here in favor of Elliot Malin. Similar to Matt, I am heavily involved in the UNR community. Let's see. Similar to Matt, I also helped found several clubs on campus. Over the last few years, I have been very privileged to benefit from the community that Elliot Malin has built. I come from a super small town. For me, community is very, very, very important. And through coming up to UNR, I was very lucky that I stepped into a ready-made community. I heard many wonderful stories of Elliot Malin long before I actually met him in person. I can speak to the wonderful stories that I have heard, to the tenacity and the accomplishments of this man. For me, I distinctly remember providing a service for an event that we did, and he said, "Hey, have any, has anyone here said thank you? I heard that you stepped up last minute." And I was like, "We, we haven't even eaten yet. It'll come up later." And he was like, "Hey, we're saying thank you now." What this person did for us was incredibly special and incredibly important. I believe that he represents the best interests of the community at UNR, the Jewish community, the overall students. I believe that he, like Matt said, and has, as he has discussed with us, I believe that he strongly believes in free speech and voter rights. He has a wonderful respect for what we as American citizens and Nevada residents have rights to. In all honesty, I was not planning on making a public, speaking public comment, so that will be all for me. Thank you very much.
Future senator again. I love it.
All right, Madam Mayor, there are no attendees in the Zoom that have their hand raised for public comments. So at this time, we're going to move into our voicemail, which we have three.
My name is Brian Woody. I have been a resident of Reno for 10 years. I've lived in the area for 20 years. I'm calling to support Kathleen Taylor for Reno City Council. My phone number is 530-414-1861. I'm a local business owner, and I've known Kathleen for eight years. She has excellent communication skills, a wonderful character. She's overall a good person, great person, actually. I volunteer with Kathleen. She volunteers a lot of her time. I would have to estimate it's probably around 10 hours a week. And I've seen firsthand her volunteering services change people's lives dramatically. I, I, I can't say enough of good things about Kathleen Taylor. She's, she's a business owner, a successful business owner. She's very involved with her community. She puts community first. She's willing to listen to people, listen to ideas, take them all into account, and come up with the best possible solution. I've seen this in action firsthand, volunteering with Kathleen. Once again, my name is Brian Woody. My phone number is 530-414-1861. I'm the sole proprietor of Woody Calculus, and I'm in full support of Kathleen Taylor for a councilwoman for my district. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Drew Sheehy, and I just wanted to express some public comment to the Reno City Council in favor of Elliot Malin as the candidate for the Ward Five council vacancy. And the reasons for my support of Elliot generally include his, the amount of time that, that Elliot has lived in the ward. It seems like he's lived in Ward Five for long enough to really have a good understanding of, of the issues and the problems that are facing the residents of Ward Five. And I think that because of his residency, he is uniquely well-suited to, to assist those citizens that are living in Ward Five and really be their best advocate. And especially with him having, you know, received two degrees from the University of Nevada fairly recently, within the past, I think, 10 years. He also is uniquely suited to, you know, advocate for the students and the members of the university community as well. I've seen Elliot has been doing a fair amount of community outreach. He's really making a lot of effort, putting a lot of effort into, into trying to learn about the issues that are facing his neighbors in Ward Five. And I really appreciate that about him and his, his pursuit of, of this seat on the council. I do want to also register some concern that I have over one of the other candidates, Kathleen. Just viewing her application, it looks like her driver's license was issued, looks like sometime in July. And my understanding is that the potential, you know, appointee would have to have been a resident of the ward for the preceding six months. And so I would like to encourage council to look into the residency, into Kathleen's residency, and determine whether or not she actually has lived in the ward for six months. And if she does not, to evaluate her residency or her, her eligibility for this appointment. Once again, I would like to register my support for Elliot, Elliot Malin, as the candidate to fill the Ward Five seat. And if you have any questions, please feel free to call me back. Again, my name is Drew Sheehy. My number is 775-742-9074. Thank you.
Hi. I'm calling in support of Kathleen Taylor, who's running as City Councilwoman. My name is Kelsey Castaneda. I'm a local CPA here in the City of Reno. And I support Kathleen Taylor's initiative and running for city council. I think she would make a fantastic councilwoman, and the city would be very lucky to have her. She has great communication skills, very good character, and overall is a very good person. I think that she would be an asset for, to the city, and yeah, and she definitely has my support and other members of the community. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me, 775-530-8976. Thank you so much. Have a great day. Bye.
All right. So, okay. And I really hate to do, to do this, but we have some unforeseen circumstance. And because the body is short, a member, we need, what I would like to do is we're gonna have to break for lunch, because I don't want to have a candidate come in, and then we go to lunch, and then they come back. Madam Clerk? and then they come back, Madam Clerk. Because we have to have, how many do we have to have? We have to have four present with the body, correct? Because we might be losing a council member in between. So, I'm trying to figure out, I think the best way to do this is break, come back at three, and then interview all three of them. What's your preference, Madam Clerk?
Okay. So, it's 11:30. So, we're going to take a break until 3:00 PM, reconvene at 3:00 PM with hopefully all members present, and then start conducting the interviews at 3:00 PM.
Yes. Three to five.
I'm so sorry. I had to step out. Could you just tell me?
Three to five. So, due to unforeseen circumstance, we possibly will be losing a council member. And because this body is already short a council member, it puts us into a precarious situation where we need to make sure that we maintain enough on the body. The issue I have is we could move forward for probably about an hour. But I feel like it would be better.
Like not fair or something?
Yeah. I feel like maybe it's not fair. I'd rather have them all sort of at once.
Do you want us to take a break? I was just looking for the bottom.
So, I'm thinking we take a break so then we can interview everyone at once instead of having one come in and then sort of stagger it.
Start when?
3:00 PM. Like 3:05, I think, is the time that everybody can get back online.
So, and we, we plan to have the special meeting until 5:00 anyway. So, those two hours, we will resume with that. Does that, does that sound acceptable?
Councilmember Weber has a question.
I do have a question. So, we will have members hopefully.
What are those going to do? Right now? Yes.
Can you imagine? They're probably so nervous as it is.
I know.
Well, and I think, Councilmember, to your point, that's, that's a part of the prob, that's a part of the resolution of stopping now without having asked any questions so that they're free to go and have lunch and go and do stuff until we get, until we're reconvening at 3:00 rather than starting a series of questions and then having some sort of discussion happening over a lunch period. So, if we stop now before any interview questions are asked, we can take a break, come back at 3:00 with everybody having a fresh mind and a fresh opportunity to go ahead and answer all the interview questions.
Okay. So, that, that is probably the best option.
Okay. So, we will go ahead and break right now at 11:30, and we will reconvene at 3:00.
At 3:00. So, I would just say, go take a run, let off some steam or some anxiety because I'm sure that they are all sitting back there because I, I can only imagine how difficult it is. I do want to say, I think today is a testament of how wonderful our community is and also how small it is actually in a lot of ways, which is so wonderful about Reno. It's very, not small maybe, but now they say we're a medium-sized city, but intimate. All of you came here and just expressed so much love, actually for all three candidates, which I thought was super impressive. But I think these candidates would be so humbled and honored for everything that all of you said. It was so heartfelt and so warming. And it makes me really, really proud of the biggest little city because sometimes we sit here and we get yelled at for about two or three hours. Just, that's just public comment. And it can get really negative and your heart sometimes walks away a little broken. And I want to just say today, it was really impressive and it makes me so very, very proud. Many of you, I was thinking, you would be an incredible city council member or mayor. And so, I would just say, please stay involved. But I think the candidates that are sitting there, probably, like I said, anxious and, you know, I mean, I can only imagine. But they'd probably be just so honored about the incredible kind stories and the things you've said to them. So, I will encourage them to play the meeting back because it warmed my heart. And I didn't know Jeff Hale was, was married to Kathleen at one time. That's the biggest little city for you, right? And so, we all know each other. I say we dated each other, missed our turn, or whatever that looks like.
I really don't.
But I want to say thank you very much. And I hope all of you can come back at 3:00. I apologize for the inconvenience. It's certainly not what we expected. So, I hope to have you back at 3:00. Thank you so much. Okay.
Thanks.
To transition into our interview portion of today's meeting.
Okay. Do you want to just, to sort of refresh the process?
Refresh our memories, correct. So, we will go ahead and have the city manager's office bring down our first finalist, which should be Alex Goff. And the process will work where the applicant gives us a five-minute introduction about who they are, why they're here. At that point, we'll transition into council member questions. If you, Madam Mayor, have a preference of order, I'd be happy to, or the body would be happy to oblige on which direction you want to go with the questions. Each question will give the finalist three minutes to answer the question and one round of follow-up questions from the body. At that point, we will move into closing statements, which again is a five-minute process. And then we will go ahead and go into the next applicant.
Could, could you just say that one more time? I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Five-minute.
Yes.
Opening statement.
Three to five minutes.
Three to five.
They don't have to use it all.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, then we will do individual council questions. And the finalist will have three minutes per question, one round of follow-up questions by the council members.
Oh, good.
And then one five-minute closing statement before we move on to the next finalist.
Okay. All right.
Everyone's good to go. Okay.
We're good to go. You like them? They're orangey. I don't know why.
A little different.
A little different? I thought, good for summer.
Yeah. Not, and good for fall.
Hello.
Howdy.
How are you doing?
Well, Mayor, we'll have a, we'll have a conversation about that later. I'm great. I'm ready to go. It's been a long day.
Did you get some lunch?
Yeah, my wife Rebecca and I, we were able to get some lunch, yeah. Made sure Elliot got lunch. Elliot didn't even eat. Yeah. I made sure he got lunch.
I know how that feels.
Yeah.
So, just be calm, take your time.
Thank you.
And remember, we're all going to sit up here and smile at you. So, Madam Clerk, I guess I'm, I'll just reiterate.
Either you can or I can.
Okay. So, you will get a three to five-minute opening statement. And then we'll bring it back to the body and we will ask you some questions. And then after that, you'll get a three to five-minute closing statement. It's pretty simple. Just like I said, take your time. Don't be, don't be anxious. We're all going to be up here smiling at you.
Thank you. So, begin when I'm ready. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Alex Goff. A couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to tell you all my story about growing up, the oldest of three, raised by a single mom, some of the challenges I had. Frankly, I do believe my story is frankly improbable. I think that most people growing up, you know, the single, raised by a single mother, did poorly in school. I think oftentimes, those kids wouldn't have had the opportunities that I've had. But I talked about why I've been able to have the opportunities I've had. I think that was due to mentorship when I joined the Marine Corps, opportunities for leadership training. So, I stand here before you today asking you to consider me to join you all as a member of the city council. And I stand here today because of my immense, what I feel obligation give back to a community that's given so much to me and my family. My wife manages a local nonprofit shelter clinic. And all the animals that come through there and they rehabilitate them and get them where they're adoptable. And that's an opportunity for people in our community and the pets in our, in our community to have a second chance. And much in the way, like I said, my family's had a second chance here in Reno. We initially, when we first moved to Northern Nevada, couldn't afford to live in Reno. So, we had to live infirmly for the first five years to be able to save up enough money to be able to buy a home here. And that, what I believe has given me a perspective and an appreciation for this community. And, thank you. And so, I stand here today, like I said earlier, feeling an immense sense of obligation and debt that I owe the two people who have invested in me. Standing here today, chaired the city of Reno's Human Rights Commission, Governor Sislak appointed the Nevada State Rehabilitation Council, while I serve as vice chair in both of those councils. Members of the councils or committees voted to have me in those positions. I think that speaks to my ability to work with others. I think that speaks to my ability to gain consensus and move the agenda along, which is something that I'm honored and humbled to serve in both those capacities. Earlier this year, I ran for Nevada Assembly, lost the race. It was, it was a tough loss. And I decided to make a career change where I was working in the defense industry, which was very close to what I did when I was active doing in the military. I did that for 10 years. And I thought, if I wasn't going to be the person pushing the button, taking the votes, I thought, well, maybe I could be the staffer of someone who pushes the button and takes the votes. So, I decided to work on a campaign. I was just up in, you know, the, in the council, in the room. And there was a member of the council liaison who used to work on a campaign, worked with him a little bit while he worked on that campaign. And so, I knew that was a trajectory. I didn't know this opportunity would come up. And so, I was very excited when the opportunity presented itself to be able to serve in this capacity again. And so, I know that whatever happens today, that my heart and my, my passion will lead me to something in service. And lastly, I stand here today because of all the investment, like I said earlier, in people that they've made in me throughout my life. Also, my wife has allowed me to do so many things. And as you all know, your family is, I think, what supports you and allows you to do service. And so, I'm proud that I have a wife that supports me and allows me to serve my community. And so, with that, that will conclude my opening statement. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. You'd be proud. She also came in public comment and said some wonderful things about you.
That was very sweet.
All right. I'm going to send it to our vice mayor to kick off some questions.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Goff. We know each other. I consider you a friend. It's really an honor to have you in chambers in this capacity. For the next half hour or so, we're going to ask you some questions. And it's much like a job interview. We will ultimately make the decision on who we think is the best fit for the role. All of us come to that with some background and understanding of elections, how they matter, the constituencies that we serve. I'm proud to have been born and raised here and then represent the entirety of the city. So, we spend every day talking to our constituents. And I think a number of my colleagues will have questions that will concern them. But for my question, I want to ask you a bit more about our employees, the staff at the city of Reno, our team members. The city of Reno employs roughly 1,400 people across all of its departments. It represents 10 bargaining units across multiple different kinds of departments, from police and fire to sewer. And I want to know, and perhaps you can focus your answer, on how you might work with a diverse team and help them to help you represent your constituents. Because I can tell you, the folks on this body are not the ones who are doing that kind of work every day. It's the members of this team and this organization. I'm proud to work on their behalf and in their service. So, that's really my question for you is how do you work with that kind of a team and, and help them achieve their professional goals while representing your constituents?
Thank you for the question, Councilman. It's interesting, actually, the first time I was brought down here to speak to you all, Jenica and I took a moment to speak outside. And Jenica informed me that she recently looked at a photo and saw that she and I went through the same Reno Citizens Institute. And then we began to talk about all the changes that are happening at the city. City manager Doug Thornley has, you know, worked with staff to incorporate a lot of changes in the city of Reno. The departments are changing. And so, I found that very interesting to learn about. But I think that it is important to work with people so they can ensure their professional, to make sure their mentorship and leadership, to make sure they're able to achieve their goals. In the military, that was kind of the focus and drive of what we did. Being a sergeant, I had people that I was directly responsible for. And so, ensuring that they were able to achieve whatever they wanted out of service was one of my roles and responsibility. And I'll be honest, I was young coming into leadership. I was 21 the first time I was ever assigned Marines. And I was really bad at it, to be honest with you. You know, and fortunately for me, I was able to learn and able to get better at it. And so, I actually ran into one of my junior Marines later when I was in Iraq and we're in the same rank. And I got the opportunity to apologize for how poor I'd been to them when I was younger. And so, what I've learned about leadership through time is that it's important to listen. It's important to, like I said earlier, gain consensus and to work as a team. We have different titles and different roles. And understanding what each person brings to the table, but making sure that every person feels like every day when they go to work, that they feel like they're respected and appreciated, I think, goes a very long way. And so, sitting here in advisory role to the city and all the departments, it's important that you respect the work that these people do every single day because frankly, we're not the ones out there doing it, right? So, making sure you respect their expertise, respect their knowledge. And, you know, I see, I was watching the other day and one of the, one of the staff members had admitted, you know, they had, there might have been a mistake on a report or something. And, you know, I can only imagine standing up here under the bright lights, having that, that admission. But, you know, not, a term that comes to mind is blowing it up, but making sure that you're treating that person with respect, you know? This person, people that come up here that advise the city council, they have very tough jobs. And so, making sure that you pay them proper respect, I think is important.
All right. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman DeRiv, I'm going to send it to you for your question.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I was elected citywide when I first ran, but I represent a ward much like you would if you were appointed here. I was wondering, what I've gotten to know about your ward being on council is that it's very diverse. You've got the university downtown area. You've got what might be called old and new northwest, you know, Keystone and so on. And then you've got the Somerset all the way out to Verde. And I was wondering, given that you have the different areas, could you tell us maybe three issues in, that you think are perhaps local to those areas or some top three issues that you think are facing those areas? And then, how would you work with the different constituents, I guess, to result, to seek some kind of balance and work with your colleagues to come up with some decisions? I'm trying to get at your understanding of the different issues in Ward Five and then how you work with others.
So, so, okay. So, two things. There are three issues and then how well I work with others.
If there are three issues, I mean, you might think there's only two or there could be five. I don't know, but.
So, affordable housing, I think, is an issue throughout the city, not just in Ward Five. And I think it's every ward's responsibility to bring units to the table, making sure that we're able to address the supply problem of housing in this community, making sure that people can afford to live in a place, I think, is the first problem. Second problem is public safety. That goes from not having enough police and fire on, in our community, also wild line, wild land fires in our community. We, the city council has increased staffing in both police and fire. But, you know, we're, people will talk about retirements that are about to happen. There was a lag in hiring least firefighters that I'm aware of. And so, making sure that we have enough staff to cover public safety. And then the third thing that I, I'll talk about is just economic opportunity, making sure that businesses are able to come to Ward Five, making sure they're able to be successful and flourish. And we have to do all this in the umbrella, recognizing fiscal sustainability, making sure that we're addressing climate change and environmental sustainability. And so, there are certainly challenges that overarching all of these issues. But to your second question, I think that working together is how you seek to solve those. And I was at a rubber chicken dinner, as I've heard you reference before, and I ran into Assemblywoman Jill Tolles. And we're different political parties. And we had a really good conversation. At the end of it, she had told me, we may agree and disagree on issues, but the place that we start at is the love of our community. And so, I think that's where you have to meet people. I've told a story through our public forums, and I'll tell it here, that in the military, in the Marine Corps, people come from all over the country to serve. And so, different backgrounds, different ways to communicate, certainly different expectations as well. And so, being able to meet people where they are, I think, is a skill that I've developed over time and something that I believe I would be able to bring to city council. Because each of you appreciate the city. Each of you appreciate your communities. And so, working with that appreciation to be able to move things forward is something I believe that I'm prepared to do.
Okay. And then, I guess I could just add, since you still have a minute. So, what I'm thinking about is you have the university downtown and they often, the people living down there are thinking. and they often, the people living down there are thinking certain issues. They want things, they don't want things, but contrasted to Verde, they maybe want a different lifestyle. So I've just seen a lot of diversity in Ward Five, much as Ward Two, that I represent. Have you seen that? I mean, have you experienced it specifically?
I mean, you know, it's interesting, even, you know, talking to some residents downtown. I don't believe there's a consensus about what the thoughts are about some of the changes that are happening downtown. But just as you spoke to just a second ago, is that you have that experience with your ward. So I know that coming into this role, if I'm fortunate enough to be selected, I know that I can talk to you. I know I can talk to the members of the council about your experiences. In that way that I don't have to exactly learn everything new, that I can have the opportunity to learn from you all and your experiences and how you navigate very similar problems. Because as you said, I think these things kind of will duplicate throughout the different wards. They may look a little different, but.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Doerr, I'm going to get to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been a great experience working with you, working with you and seeing you actually working. I wasn't working, you were working. And you were working with the other council, the other candidates at the two meetings that I was able to attend and see your interaction. What I liked the most was that all three of you were just interacting and just like you would with your constituents, just like you would be at the council, you know, here at the dais. And I just, I just loved seeing that. And it was great meeting you and your wife and just having the opportunity, because I don't know you. And I think you were really out there and letting people see who you were. I may not have known you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, Councilwoman.
Exactly, exactly. And I just appreciated that so much. So I'm from Ward Four. And I don't know how much you know about Ward Four, but I hope you do. But we're looking at you for Ward Five, right? But we all, no matter what ward, are working citywide. So I think that's something that is really important, is that there's issues in my ward that are going to be impacting yours and vice versa all around. So, but one of the issues that is really out there right now is, I'd like to know about what you believe is the single most important issue facing the growth of the city of Reno. And in Ward Four, it is, as all the wards are, it's, the growth is out there. And we're continuing to grow. So, so the question is, is the single most important issue facing the growth in the city of Reno, how do you plan to work with your colleagues from other wards to best consider this issue?
Thank you for the question, Councilwoman. And thank you for coming to the public forums. I appreciated the opportunity to speak with you and members of our community. And so one issue, I would, if possible, I'd like to put a bucket of issues. So I would have a bucket of infrastructure, climate change and environmental sustainability. I think those things are considerations when we're talking about growth. And, you know, in Ward Four, as an example, you know, you have people who are very concerned about flooding and traffic and issues such as those when it comes to growth and development. And navigating those issues are very serious topics. When you talk about traffic, I mean, people sitting in their car away from their families is something you have to take very seriously. And, I mean, much less flooding. Someone's home has been flooded or the concern that eventually their home could be flooded. And so how you navigate those issues, you know, at work, when the COVID pandemic happened, I had the opportunity, I was a union steward, which means that I represented the workers in my labor union. And I met with the site manager and we developed policies related to mitigation around COVID. So what we did was we started with principles. We started with, our site couldn't shut down because we had a supportive mission, which was training naval aviators. And we also started from the position of, well, one, that we couldn't shut down. I mean, that was the main thing. We had to continue to go. And so working with first establishing principles in order to move forward for a common goal. And so I think that sometimes in politics, maybe the common goal isn't always as evident. But I believe, I'm an optimist. And so I always believe that a common goal can be found between people. And I commit to continuing to work to find common goals if I'm fortunate enough to be selected for this position, because I understand how important this city is to each of you. Thank you for the question, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Good job. All right, Councilwoman Delgado, I hear you're up there in the sky somewhere.
Hi, hi, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Hi, go ahead.
My apologies to everybody for not being present. It's great to hear and see you, Alex. You're doing a great job. I'll just dive right in. It's no secret that we have started the process of hiring a new police chief to the city of Reno. What's your vision for the future policing of Reno?
Thank you for the question, Councilman. My future, my vision for the future of policing the city of Reno, and just for background on that, I remember a couple of years ago during the pandemic, there were issues with policing throughout the country. And then Councilman Delgado and Dr. Angie Taylor, among others, worked to look at reforms presented at the time through the Gwynne Center Report. And I was very excited that those conversations were happening at the time. Chief Soto was his interim city manager and he was working and navigating through a lot of that stuff. And so moving forward, I think that community responsiveness from a police chief is incredibly important, having connections to the community. I think oftentimes, you know, people closest to the problem, especially when it's systemic, can be aware of what problems are coming out and making sure that you're connected to those in the community so you can figure out what's going on. I think that's the number one thing I would want to see, is just someone really connected to our communities here, someone that knows us and can help us navigate through whatever potential problems certain communities may be having. I think that's really important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Delgado. Okay, I was going to ask you a public safety question because I always say a safe city is a prosperous city. And I pride this council into investing more in our public safety every budget cycle. So, but I am going to, I'm actually going to send, I'm going to take a question from Mr. Cecil. They say Cecil, right?
Yeah.
Because I said Cecil, they said, no, it's Cecil.
Scary Cecil.
Okay, okay. And Mac Rossi. What is one code or policy that you would like to see changed and why?
That was the one, that was one during our forum that I think caught us off guard. And so everyone will be happy to know that that question's coming back.
Maybe I shouldn't, I didn't realize.
No, no, it's all good.
You did this already in a forum? Okay, let's, let's change then. I'm going to change. Let's go back to public safety because I think it's, it's so important in our city. And so I would like to know how you feel investing in our public safety and what do you think is the most critical issue facing public safety in our city today?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. And so what this council has done previously with the budgets, you've increased the MOST team, which is the Mobile Outreach Safety Team. So these are people who are trained to deal with people that are having mental health crises. And so when we talk about what we want to see out of policing, what the future kind of is, that's a good example of something that is newer and innovative, increased staffing. And so what I believe is, is that we need to continue to find that right size for the city of Reno. People refer to the past and how many people that we've had in the past. But we can't go back, we can only move forward. So in the, in the future, what I would like to see is continuing working toward a public safety, police and fire that fits the city of Reno. And I don't think we're there yet as far as the people. And certainly in the, in the past, I've been told about conditions as far as the trucks and the different items that the firefighters use. And so I know that there's been efforts to correct some of those as well. But, you know, the firefighters and police are on the front lines providing the services that the city gives. And so making sure that they know that we respect what they do and make sure we respect that we know that, you know, they have a tough job. And so I would like to see we continue to hire more police and more firemen here in our community.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, Madam Clerk. What would you like to?
Well, she said we maybe get a round two, is that what you said?
What do you think?
I had said that we could do follow up questions to any of the answers or the questions that the council had done.
And then I'm just going to follow up. So I guess it's safe to say, I'm going to assume with your answer that you would be supportive at budget time to increase the resources for our firemen and our police officers in the community.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, so, so often in government, we ask people to do more with less, right? And so I think it's important that we make sure that people have reasonable, you know, they have, they have the, the, the things that they need to be able to do the job effectively. I think that's important. Because what you do actually is that you put out a worse product when you don't have enough. And so I think that to have a better product, we need to make sure that we have a right sized police and fire that fits the community. And so, you know, there's the issues with fire as far as dispatch. And so I think that, you know, we figure out dispatch, I think that'll go a long way. But firefighters, we certainly need more of those as well. And so there's, you know, technical fixes such as dispatch that we can continue to work on, but certainly making sure that they have the resources that we need, that they need.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Doerr.
Sure, thank you. You know, my question was about the top three issues. And it's, my reverse is almost what we've had to consider as our bottom three issues. So we, we have done a Reimagine Reno master plan. And the number one issue that people say they like about Reno is the access to the outdoors and recreational opportunities. And so that has remained a focus. At the same time, whether we like it or not, we are experiencing tremendous heat, the flooding you mentioned before, the climate change issues. So my question is, how do you feel the city is progressing on those two things? Recreation and sustainability, how are we doing? And then what, do you have ideas on an additional focus or resource on those things?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I mean, I, I believe that, you know, there will continue to be work done for generations after us, right? So I don't think the job will probably be completed with this council. But I mean, as far as moving us in a better direction, I think that this council has moved us in a better direction as far as those issues. I mean, now in the city of Reno, we track emissions going forward. So that can give us real good data points about emissions in our community and how we can best hopefully mitigate those through ensuring that businesses have items that will reduce the emissions into the air. And so, and, you know, recreation, outside recreation, I think, is the true gem of our community, being able to go to our parks and our trails. And, you know, it's, I think the council's done a good job.
Yeah. Do you think that, the question was, do you think we need to do anything additional in terms of focus or resources? And I'll just put this in context, during the recession, we had to cut our Parks Department more than half. And we're still rebuilding. And there's so much demand with the growth for the outdoor recreation. It's been a struggle when you're balancing wanting, looking at our top issue, public safety, our, our demand from our public for affordable housing. You know, where do these things fit? They, they often get short shrift. So I'm just asking you if you had any thoughts about how to kind of pull it together, how we can do better?
Not, not at this moment. I, I think that, you know, working together and working as a, as a group, we can tackle a lot of these problems. But as you said, I mean, they're, they don't fit neatly, right?
Right.
And so, you know, and we have to do all this under the umbrella of fiscal sustainability as well, right? Because we don't have unlimited resources at the city. So we need to be really targeted and effective about how we use those, those resources. And so, you know, I think working from you all and learning from you all about how we could do that in a more effective way.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Because I know that we're probably needing to wrap it up. But I do want to know, because I'm really curious, because I think it's a great question, is the city code or policy that you would like to see changed? Sounds like you thought about it, so I'm curious.
Um, the city code or policy that I would like to change would be the priorities that I've established earlier, working with people that know the city codes and policies in a better way, to be able to navigate those issues together. I'm not coming before you today as an expert on the city of Reno, better codes and policies. What I think the skill set that I bring is the ability to work with other people, the ability to trust people and their word and, and, and working collaboratively. And I, I think that's important when you, when you address these issues. And so I think that giving ideas of principles and allowing staff and stakeholders to be able to do their roles and their functions and working together, I think we can change whatever codes and policies need to be changed to be able to effectuate the goals of better, my goodness, effectuate better public safety, ensure that there's opportunity here in the city of Reno and, you know, making sure that we're able to accomplish our goals.
Okay, thank you so much. So we're going to give you three to five minutes of closing statement. But here's one thing, one thing I do want to ask. Sometimes we don't all agree up here, and I think that that's nice. It gives us a totally different perspective. And a lot of times you might not have thought about it a certain way. And a council member will bring something up and you can totally see why they might feel that way. But, you know, we have differences of opinions and sometimes politically different and those kinds of, you know, not challenges, I think they're really good. It makes us all really different. But when you walk away from the dais, I think for all of us, the most important thing is to respect one another. Tell me how you feel about that when you walk away, you know, sort of if, if you don't align with the council? What does that look like to you?
You know, I'll be honest, you know, in some opportunities that I've had for service, I've had to learn those lessons. You bring a lot of passion into something, you believe in something very strongly. And then you may not be successful in the way that you had imagined when you first thought of it. And so through the University of Syracuse, they had a program specifically for veterans. And there was a mayor, Michael Nutter, from Philadelphia. I had the opportunity to speak with him about this particular topic. I asked him, how, how do you deal with a loss? And he had told me that you have to understand you're going to have 24 hours tomorrow and that you can get back up and you can reengage and possibly change the perspective to be successful in the target. And this was years ago. And so listening to that lesson, having the opportunity to observe, you know, I was talking to a friend of mine the other day who felt like they had lost a particular policy position. And I had said, you know, moving, it's all about perspective and how you look at it and approaching it from respect. Like I said earlier about my interaction with Assemblywoman Toll, about coming from the position to where we all love our community. That's the place we should start from. And so I think that if you have a good start point, you can navigate sometimes very thorny and very difficult issues. But I mean, it's, it's not always going to be easy, as Councilwoman Doerr said earlier. Some, when you're trying to connect these puzzle pieces, sometimes the pieces just don't fit. Or maybe you just don't have the money to be able to fully get the thing done, et cetera, et cetera. These things are difficult. And you bring, sometimes I tell people, you know, because oftentimes people coming here will be very frustrated with what is happening in our city. And I say sometimes the people sitting in the front are actually some of the most frustrated people. That's why they decided to run for office, right? And so recognizing and appreciating that, I think, is a good starting point for finding mutual understanding and hopefully mutual respect.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, you have three to five minutes.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you so much for your time today. This is a very big decision to select the next person to represent Ward Five. And ultimately, I think that I offer diversity that this council currently doesn't have. Having served in the Marine Corps for eight years, I think it's taught me a number of lessons, serving in Iraq where mission focused, mission driven, working with people from all across the world to be able to accomplish things. I think that's something that would greatly, that would benefit, didn't mean to add the qualifier, that would benefit this council that experienced that background. And like I'd said earlier, you know, I currently chair the Human Rights Commission, served as vice chair, I was elected to those positions. And I think that that speaks to my ability to work with other people, which I think is incredibly important. And I think my passion, optimism for the future of this community. You know, like I said earlier, when I first started getting involved in the city of Reno, completely different departments. I almost felt like I needed to re-enroll in the Reno Citizens Institute to continue to learn about all the new changes that are happening. And it's exciting. But, you know, there's certainly challenges as well. And so navigating the success and the excitement as well as the challenges, you know, like one of the words I wrote down here was cybersecurity. We know that, you know, foreign actors are looking to exploit municipalities, cities, counties. And so, you know, that's a, that's a challenge that, you know, this council has on it too, making sure that, you know, we're investing enough resources in cybersecurity to make sure that we're able to protect all of our records that we're digitizing, right? And so there's a lot of challenges, but there's a lot of opportunity. And so I stand here before you today as someone who's a product of a lot of opportunity. And where I started from in my life and where I am today, I'm very proud of. And it's a direct benefit, I think, to, like I said earlier, the investments that have been made in me. And so I would be honored and would, it would be honored, it would be an honor to work with you all in that capacity. So thank you for your consideration and thank you.
All right, great job.
Thank you.
How do you feel? You made it.
I, I don't think that was ever not on the table, Mayor. I, I don't think that was ever not on the table, Mayor. I think I was always going to make it. But it feels, it feels better, I mean, unless someone, someone have different.
Sometimes, this is hard. It's hard to get up, especially, public speaking is like in the top three of like the things that people just absolutely dread to do. I think it's flying, public speaking, and a dentist.
So I was telling my wife earlier, like, part of my, not that I'm the, the best, I mean, obviously you just heard me, I'm not the best public speaker, but I did poorly in school, and part of that reason is because I acted like a goofball in school. I wasn't paying attention. And so that has allowed me, I think, to stand in front of people and be able to speak, because I would, in my past life, act goofy in front of people. And so I think that helps me.
That's very good, because everyone likes to laugh. Okay, thank you so much. Really appreciate it, and also thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a wonderful day.
I think, I think you can stay, Al. Okay. Madam Clerk.
All right, Madam Mayor, it sounds like Elliot Mallon is on his way to chambers.
Hello.
Hello, friends.
How are you feeling?
A little tired.
A little tired?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you gotta get some energy now.
Uh, there's plenty of energy.
Not the time to be tired.
There's no such thing as being too tired.
You may want to bring down your mic, or just adjust it, I mean.
Oh, absolutely, I'm way too short for that.
No, I mean, everybody does.
I just have no preconditions of my height. I just get started.
Okay, you're not nervous, right?
Maybe about being hit in the face.
We're all up here, we're gonna smile at you, we're rooting for you. So you are going to get three to five minutes of an opening statement, and then we're gonna ask you some questions. And then we're gonna give you three to five minutes of closing remarks. So go ahead, take it away whenever you're ready.
Awesome, you ready? Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council, Elliot Mallon for the record. Old habits die hard, so I always do that. I've lived in Ward Five for over 12 years now, since moving here to attend the University of Nevada, where I've actually graduated from twice. While at Nevada, I was highly involved with ASUN, where we started the March from the Arch homecoming event, which I'd like to see come back and work with ASUN on that. We laid the groundwork for the bridge area we now see between the university and downtown. It was a very important project for me when I was the vice president of student potty. And we expanded access to services for students, all in Ward Five. I like to say that I moved to Reno and fell in love twice, first with Reno, and the second with my now-wife, who I met at the university, which is in Ward Five. And we've actually been married three years as of today, so she'll be excited about that later. I recently turned 30, which makes me the youngest, potentially the youngest member of the city council, and would be a unique view of, into the life of the students and millennials here in Reno. We have seen a steady increase in our young adult population due to the diversification of our economy, and they deserve a voice, a representative voice on this body. Since graduating, I've been working in public policy to expand opportunities for Renoites and Nevadans, from regulatory reforms to the legislature, to Reno municipal code fixes with you, and even helping businesses find the right department here. While relatively young, I'm proud of what I've accomplished in my career so far, from the previously mentioned legislation, to starting a nonprofit foundation that is centered in Ward Five, to even expanding a nonprofit based in Southern Nevada to Reno to increase services for local Renoites. I love giving back to the city. I have not served on a board or commission with the city, and I've done that purposefully because I believe that with my career previously, there might have been a conflict of interest, and I don't find that it would be ethical to have had that. But I've been able to put aside my career so far, and through this process, and hand off a lot of that business, to make sure there is no conflict of interest. I want to mention that Reno is doing incredibly well. We've cut our debt by $241 million, we cut our retired employees' medical benefits by $112 million, our tax allocation bonds are down 22.92 percent, agency debt is down 71.78 percent, our largest remaining debt balance is retac at $220 million. We've improved our credit rating to an A+. Reno is now a top-three city to live. We've increased our Parks and Rec budget, increased bridge housing such as the Sierra and Sage, that is also ready to expand again. And all of our fire stations are open for the first time since the Great Recession. My goal is to keep the health of Reno going strong and meeting our Reimagine Reno master plan. To work with this council, our regional and state partners, and the amazing Reno staff would be an honor. Being part of this team will make us stable for future generations. We must remain sustainable as a city to keep our neighbors and residents safe. And sustainable means our water, our energy, our health, our safety, and our fiscal status as a city. Our police department is currently smaller than it was 15 years ago, with a much larger population today. We are growing, but ensuring our sustainability is key to protecting this Reno that we all know and love. We must keep our fire department staffed, and I've been fortunate enough to meet with so many people from RPD, Reno Fire, the Village on Sage, which I had an opportunity to go and tour, which was incredible, our university students, ASUN officers, and being present in these communities at events such as yesterday's Senior Fest, which was amazing, the overdose awareness event two weeks ago, and so on. It's been incredible listening, learning, and helping respond to residents' issues. We must work with our partners to accomplish this goal. I love, I know how to make the fixes necessary to alleviate future stresses by leveraging the relationships that I've created throughout our state and federal delegation. I'm ready to tackle the tough problems heading forward to sustain the new Reno. I bring local knowledge from Ward Five, as having lived there for my entire time in Reno over a decade now. I have a strong commitment to doing what's right. Having the conversations and collaborating with others and listening to feedback is vital to make us keep our bright future. We have other challenges ahead, from affordable housing, healthy development, traffic and street safety, recreation, preservation, and the continued diversification of our economy. A big concern for our university has been street safety, and working with them to keep the student population is, safe is key to the ward, as the university is an economic engine for our entire region. I'm ready today to commit to moving us forward. I commit to consistently holding listening sessions throughout our ward, and have already had one this past Monday, to get as many residents involved as possible in this process. It's been a privilege and honor to listen, meet, and get to know so many of my neighbors and fellow Ward Five residents, and have earned so much support from them. I don't take this process for granted and understand the privilege it is to be here today. And I have plenty of experience at the city as well, and it's been an honor to have worked with you all previously with SUPs, business licensing, ordinances, and so on. Not just one part of the city life for me, I try to touch it all and help everywhere I can. Again, it's an honor to be here today, it has been an honor meeting so many new neighbors and now calling them friends, earning so much support from them, and doing what I can do to be the best representative possible for them. We accomplish these goals and keep our city moving forward together as a team, and I look forward to hopefully joining this team. And thank you all, and especially a big thank you to our city clerk, who has been instrumental in helping us through this process.
Nice job.
Thank you.
How do you feel?
A little relieved.
Okay, good. All right, I'm gonna send it over to our Vice Mayor to ask the first question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mallon, thank you so much for being here. I consider you a friend, we've known each other for a number of years. You're gonna hear a lot of questions over the next half hour or so, and I would encourage you just to listen to the question, do your best to answer each of the questions, and, and put your own spin on it, because there isn't a right answer, right? There's not a right answer to any of the questions we're asking. For my part, and I know my colleagues are gonna focus on your constituents, it sounds like you've been doing some of that on your own, which I applaud you for doing. But for my part, I want to talk really about our employees here in the city of Reno. The city of Reno employs nearly 1,400 people, that includes 10 bargaining units across multiple different departments. And really, what we do up here is set policy goals and directives for the city, and all of the ideas that we get, some of those come from the staff, some of them come from us, and they have to make do with what we give them, and go out and try to accomplish some of those goals. But they really are the heart and soul of the organization. The city manager's office, of course, in our organization, is the head of those 1,400 employees. So my question really wants you to focus on how you will engage with our diverse team here at the city in order to represent your ward and also the city at large. None of the wards are so differently complex from one another that you aren't still representing all of Reno every time you take this dais or represent yourself in the community. So really just focus your time with my question on our employees and the team members here in the city of Reno, and how you might interact with them.
Thank you, that's actually a, I've had the privilege, as I mentioned, to have worked with so many of the city employees. I consider a lot of them friends, and having attended so many of these meetings and worked with you all, it's more than just friendship, it's more than just a colleague, this is a Reno family. And part of being in a family is listening, learning, understanding that you don't have every answer, don't know every question, and ha, being able to, to get to the right answer by going to the right person, and treating them with respect, dignity, and making sure that we understand what our role is, especially for the city council. The employees drive the mission, especially for the implementation of what, what happens here. And so working with them and listening to them and understanding their concerns, if a certain policy idea might, might not work, I, I can't say it will right off the bat, but knowing that I can approach them in a healthy environment and work with them as a team to get to the right answer is kind of the strategy I would like to take. I think that the city of Reno has tremendous talent here. It's talent that I've previously tried to join, because there's so much good that happens from the city. From, the city, people always ask, why do I want to come to the city? And the reason is, our employees here, the Reno family here, touches every person's daily life. And understanding that they're the ones that really see what's going on, and are the true experts for our city, is very important. So thank you.
All right, nice job. Okay, Councilwoman Doer, sending it to you.
Thank you so much. I think you know that when I ran for office, I was elected citywide, but I do represent Ward Two. And each ward, I've found, has very localized issues. What might be the preeminent issue down in Ward Two is maybe different than Ward Five, even though we have a lot of issues in common. So as I've observed it over the years, Ward Five has some distinct areas. There's downtown university, there's what, the old and new, what are we calling this? The Northwest, I guess, and then there's the Somerset, Verdai. And they, they all have different kind of people living them, in them, some are retired, some are families, some are going to school, some are starting businesses, some are maintaining businesses. So from your perspective, what do you think are the top three issues in Ward Five? And you might even think of these different areas when you're answering. And then the second part of the question is, how would you work to balance and square up the issues with constituents that may not agree across your very long and diverse ward?
It's a, it is a very diverse ward, because as you mentioned, you have the university, which is very young, you have downtown, which is very vibrant, you have Verdai, and then you have Somerset. And Somerset has two distinct areas too, from Del Webb to Somerset itself, and then you have Old Northwest, where families have been for generations at times. I've been fortunate enough to live in different parts of this ward, from downtown to the university, the Old Northwest, and my parents are now in Somerset, and I'm very thankful to have them there. The first thing is affordable housing. And that's what I've noticed is mostly ward-wide, from downtown to the university and Northwest. The next is going to be public safety, street safety. On Seventh Street, over off of Keystone, you see gates that are often blown down from cars hitting them, you see students that are almost hit by vehicles after school hours, and that's been a big, big issue. And the other one is an issue we've worked on together, which is the downtown alcohol ordinance, specifically for the downtown area, and fresh food. I, I, we all worked on that very well, and I was very thankful to be here to do that. But I don't think we've solved the problem. From what I've heard from people down here in downtown, it's still a food desert. What we were able to include in there is fresh food, I don't think counts as enough for groceries. And especially as the university bridges into the downtown area, that's really important to think about, is how we, how we bring that food in there and how we manage that. And one of the ways I've been trying to figure this out and balance that is, I want to host listening sessions, these aren't town halls, these are listening sessions. It's where I have the opportunity to go and listen. I need to know what the issues are, if I can't hear the issue, I can't respond to the issue. And then I can't bring it here, and I can't work the city staff. And so I want to hold these in every different part of the ward, because I don't want to put Old Northwest, where I currently live, over the university, or over downtown, or over Verdai and Somerset. They're so diverse, that I have to be able to bring these to each one and see what's going on and listen to them. If I can't listen, then I shouldn't even be here, to be quite frank.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So glad to see you today. I think we've known each other for quite some time, and appreciate the fact that you're here, and making it through, doing a good job. I mentioned to Mr. Goff that I represent Ward Four, I think you're familiar with Ward Four, I think we've talked about that. But it is a little bit different, and my question is gonna be about growth. And so, if I can find my question here, I will ask the question. What do you believe is the single most important issue facing growth of the city of Reno? How do you plan to work with your colleagues from other wards to best consider this issue?
I, thank you. I think that actually gets to how I opened, and that's sustainability, right? I mentioned that for the first time since the Great Recession, we fully fast, staffed our firehouses. We can't allow those to go unstaffed again. As we grow, we have to be able to respond to crises. We are not ignorant to understand that there are fires, there are things that happen within our community. And having, and making sure that that is sustainable going forward, that also means making sure that the coffers for the city are sustainable, and the revenue is healthy as we move forward. It's not lost on me how we derive revenue in the state of Nevada for municipal and local government, and we have to make sure we do everything we can to protect that revenue, especially at the next economic downturn. As we grow, I would say that I want to see healthy development. And healthy development means that our resources are there to be able to respond to everything, from sewer, to streets, to fire, to police. As I mentioned again, our department right now for police is smaller than it was 15 years ago, with a larger city, as we grow north, especially in Ward Four. And we have to work together as a team, as colleagues, in addressing these, because it's not just your ward. Ward Two is also growing with the Daboni area, and this is important over there. And in Ward Five, as there's more development west towards Verdai, this is important over there. And so we have to work together to address these, to keep all of Reno safe, because I think that's the interest here for everybody, is keeping the city safe, keeping the city prosperous, and moving forward.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Delgado.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Elliot, good to see you, Mr. Mallon.
Good to see you.
Good to see you on camera. I understand you have a tight 4:30, so I apologize if we're gonna carry you past your, your tight schedule there. As you know, there's, it's no secret that we're starting the process of hiring a new police chief for the city of Reno. And you've spoken to a lot of the issues with respect to us, the lower staff numbers that we have. What's, what's your vision for the future of policing in Reno?
Thank you, and I actually got out of my 4:30 meeting, we were all good. There was a little bit of a crunch there, that was, made me a little nervous, but we're, we're good. We, we're flexible, is the way I like to put it, right? That's a great question as well, because I, I sat in this room, and I saw community support for a candidate here. Something that I look at, as I've lived in Reno, is the response from RPD, and how they interact not just with our citizens, our tourists, but others within our community. And I want to make sure that we have a, a police force that continues to treat others humanely, with dignity, and operates within our community. A little anecdote for this, I'm a member of the Jewish community here, I'm very involved, involved in our Jewish community, the High Holidays are coming. And every year, RPD shows up to every synagogue here in town to just check in. And that's part of being a community police force. And so I want to make sure that we have a, a police chief that comes in, that understands Reno, understands what we need to do for the size of city that we are, and the region that we have, within our local agreements and other departments within our area, but also wants to invest their time in meeting the various communities. Because Reno's a diverse city, it's a growing city. And I believe that the police chief, no matter who is selected, has to truly understand our city. And I look forward to seeing a diverse applicant pool. I'm hoping we see a lot of applicants, especially from cities that are of kind of a like size, because sometimes it's good to see and understand and hear what's going on in other departments, and how we can take that, especially learn from that, if that's the right candidate. And so just having them involved, being a community-based police force, being interactive with the community in a, a manner that shows the community humanity and dignity, is, is vital for the trust in RPD. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good job. Okay, I'm gonna jump around, I think I'm, I'm not going to ask the same question that everyone else asks. One of the things I think it's really important to have, compassion for all different populations, and certainly our homeless population, and mental health is so, so critical. Can you tell me what you believe the city's role is? What role should we play?
That's an important role, actually, it's an important question. We have to understand the public safety side of everything, but we also have to treat people with compassion. There is an indigent population here that is always looking for, often looking for assistance, health, resources. And we've had a little bit of an issue, I think, in our community, and this is a region-wide problem of, how do we address this together? I think the city must work with our regional partners to address this. We have the CARES campus, obviously, that's mostly Washoe County, but we have this Sage Street project that I think is amazing. I had the opportunity, like I said, to go and view it and tour it and understand what was going on there, and seeing what they needed as a bridge from living on the street to moving ahead and having a home. And treating people with that dignity of saying, you deserve this shelter, you deserve this opportunity, you deserve fresh food, you deserve to be clean. I've been in meetings here where I saw an individual, all they wanted was a shower. And sometimes we have to remember that to have compassion, not just as individuals, as leaders, but as an organization in treating others. And I've seen this city and the city staff go out of their way to treat people with compassion. And it leaves me inspired for our community, for our city, for our region, that we're the ones that are leading that effort to be compassionate and treat others with that dignity. And I think it is incredibly vital that we continue to do so as we look for other resources, grants, everything we can to bring into this community to help this population.
All right, I forgot you were here that day. They did a phenomenal job.
Absolutely amazing job.
Phenomenal job.
I left proud.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. Really appreciate this opportunity to hear your views. I asked you earlier about some top three questions, top three issues, and sometimes we also need to look at things that are maybe lower on our priority list that we'd like to do more than must do. So, we've got, you mentioned public safety, you mentioned housing and downtown alcohol. And now, I'd like you to think about, we did a Reimagine Reno process, and our top one issue seemed to come out. Why do people love Reno? It was the opportunity to be outdoors and to recreate. And so, yet, through the recession, we've had to cut those resources even more dramatically than our police, our fire, our other ends of our, you know, city staff. And at the same time, we've been hit with something not of our making, and that is climate change. We can't avoid it, you know, they're asking us to conserve energy, we're 105 degrees potentially today. So, my question to you is, how do you feel the city's progressing on both of those issues? Recreation, sustainability, you mentioned them both. And I'd like to know where you think we need to put any additional focus, if we do need to. So, I'm trying to get your take on those two issues.
I think, thank you. I mentioned this as well, as we've given a budget increase to Parks and Rec, which I think is incredible. My wife grew up in Ward Five as well. The house she grew up in, there's a little park over by there, I'm a Karen. The park is overgrown, it's a little dilapidated, it needs a refresh. It doesn't really need new playground fixtures, it just needs a refresh. And I think that it's vital, again, as you mentioned, and I read the Reimagine Reno Master Plan, our residents want something to do. They don't want to go home, they don't want to go to work and go home, and that's their life. No, they want to do things in this community. We live in a, what I like to call this little hidden gem, which is nestled in the Sierras, where we have the Truckee River, Lake Tahoe. And we have all of these wonderful parks, and we have an expansion of our parks and recreation with a new Moana Pool. All of this is vital to giving Renoites the best possible life experience and quality of a life. I personally don't want to live in a place that doesn't have that recreation, that doesn't have those parks, it doesn't have that greenery. I value that, because we also use that for culture, from the Food Truck Fridays in Ward One, every Friday during the summer. I love these things, and I want others to have them as well, and I want to see that expanded throughout our city. And so, when we come to recreation, I think it's vital. It's not just a lower on the totem pole thing, it is actually, I think, up there. Unfortunately, maybe not in the top three, maybe like three and a half.
Okay.
But it's important. And then, when we get to climate change and green energy, we had a, I had a conversation with somebody in the ward recently, they were asking this question. And it's funny, because I think we talk about trees in here frequently. And one of the biggest reasons why cities are warming is because of all the blacktop through them. How do we increase the tree cover? And I know that that's part of the master plan as well, but that's going to be vital moving forward in trying to draw down the temperatures here in Reno, because you're right, the last three days, I think we've had record temperatures. I don't let my dogs outside right now, and I know they love being outside, but it's too hot. And so, we have to address this. I think the city's done a great job so far. We have more to do. I don't think this is something we can ever just stop on. We can't end at the, be at the end of the day, be like pat ourselves on the back and say, we've done it, we solved climate change, we solved Parks and Rec. That'll never happen. We always have to move forward, see what we can do to get to the next step. And bringing more rec to Reno, and part of that is dependent on climate change, right? Look at the river right now. One of my favorite things to do is come watch people do the slalom kayaking through the river. It's hard to do when there's no water in it. And so, I think those things go hand in hand, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm going to hurry here, really quickly. So, I think you already asked this question, but I think it's a good one, and it's from, I believe, your Ward Five nab. What is one city code or policy you would like to see changed?
Does it have to be one?
Why is everyone laughing at that question?
Does it have to be one?
Go ahead.
There's two, and I think the city will, there is one. I'll start with the alcohol ordinance.
Okay.
And I worked on that with you. I think that we have to go back and solve the fresh food part of that, especially for the downtown area. I know, I say this one because I know it intimately, but I also don't think that, at least I got to where I want it to be, unfortunately. And I want to address that fresh food stuff in downtown Reno. If that means trying to incentivize somebody to come down to Reno and build a grocery store in the downtown area, then fantastic, because it's a food desert here between here and the university. And there are residents in both sides that are dependent on that. They have to either have a car or find somebody to give them a ride to go to the Rayleigh's off Keystone, and that's sometimes too far, especially for students or other resources, school books, textbooks, paper, pencils, recreation in the downtown area. And so, I think by building out and enhancing our fresh food requirements down here would be vital. I don't know if we really solved it in that ordinance. The next part, and I know the city's done an incredible job at this so far, but is maintaining the cutting of red tape for affordable housing, so that way, we can get this built, so we can get people in homes that they can afford, because I know we have a population that was unfortunately removed from their living situations, and we have to find a solution. And so, continuing that work, it's not necessarily changing it, but making sure that's a focus and continuing it so we can ensure that this population has a place to live. And again, with dignity and compassion is so important. And those two things, I also think, go hand in hand. We can build affordable housing, but if we don't have a grocery right there for them to get to, then it becomes expensive and the cost of living continues to increase. There's more in cost of living than just the roof over your head. And so, we have to give as much opportunity as possible for residents to have a healthy, safe, and clean environment to live, to work, and to go shopping.
All right, good job. Okay, lastly, really quick, sometimes we might have a difference of opinion up here, and when we walk away from the dais, tell me how you maintain consensus.
I've learned throughout my career that leaving angry doesn't get me anywhere. I can disagree, at the end of the day. I've known a lot of you for a long time now. There's things we all disagree on, that's okay. At the end of the day, that's okay. If we can have a healthy conversation to move the ball forward and get to some sort of consensus, that's what's most important. Working as a team for what's best for Reno is how we do that. And we have to be able to leave things on the dais. We can't carry that with us, it's, I don't find it healthy. I don't think it does any benefits to the constituents, to people, our residents. So, for me, it's so important. I will work with anybody, I will listen to anybody, I'm willing to do that, it's how it's always been. In Carson City, during legislative session, if I'm carrying a bill that I've written and somebody has a problem with it, I sit down with them, I ask them what the issue is. I can't fix it unless I know. And then, we can work on fixing it together as that team, to be cohesive, to be collaborative, that's how we move forward. Thank you.
Okay. All right, are you ready?
Sure.
Okay, this is your last five minutes.
Oh, wow.
So, go ahead and give us your closing remarks.
All right, thank you. Mayor and council, thank you again for your time today and this opportunity, it's been incredible. I believe I'm uniquely situated to hit the ground running today to continue the health of our city and drive our sustainability for the future. I've lived in Ward Five for over a decade and understand the diversity of our ward. And it is a very diverse ward. Having met with community organizers, groups, and neighbors from across the ward, I am thankful to have earned so much support from all of them, from a very diverse walk of life. I will be thrilled to be part of this team, working with you, our amazing city staff, our partners, and our community to propel us forward. With knowledge of the Nevada Open Meeting Law and relevant NRS, I have a very small learning curve, and I can get started right away. There's a lot to address, to keep our city the gem it is, to keep us going in a healthy manner, from affordable housing, healthy development, water, energy, and fiscal stability. I know how to get these done, and I know the path forward by working with you all together. Recently, I had the pleasure to sit down with our leaders throughout Nevada and know they are looking here, to the City Council here and cities of council across the state to be the driving force for the changes we need for future viability and sustainability throughout Nevada and especially here in Reno. This is necessary to keep Renoites safe and healthy, not just from today or tomorrow, but also the day after tomorrow. The City Councilperson for Ward Five needs to have the knowledge to drive these conversations with the team and be part of that team. There's more to Reno than just development, and development is vitally important. But as we develop, we must be ready to address crucial changes of a burgeoning metropolitan community. By picking me for this position, I will be ready to address every issue. I will continue to listen, learn, and respond appropriately as a team. I look forward to a partnership with you and to always put Reno first. Thank you again, Mayor and Council, to our city clerk and her team, and the amazing professionals that make up the Reno family. It's been incredible so far, it's been an amazing journey, having been able to talk to so many people, learn so much, and listen to so many residents. And here, what is, what's the problem? For example, over at the university with both housing affordability, street safety, where they're talking about students almost getting hit on the crosswalks, and how we work together with that, to downtown, and talking about food insecurity, to the Sierra, the Sage Street property, and seeing how we can expand that to Somerset, and learning about the intricate issues, especially with development as it grows over there and in the Northwest, where our parks are ready to be revitalized. Our neighbors are excited, and they want to make sure that their, our children are kept safe as we grow and we remain sustainable, to make sure that we have the police force necessary to respond adequately and in a healthy manner, and the fire stations filled with firefighters to be able to keep us all safe, and our Parks and Rec being fully staffed and doing everything that they can to keep our resources, our city resources, going fresh and an opportunity for our families that call Reno home. And I'm proud to call Reno home, I'm proud to have lived in Ward Five for, over the last decade, I'm proud of the work I've done in Ward Five, and I look forward to the opportunity to hopefully serving with you all to keep making Reno the best place possible. So, thank you.
All right, great job. You made it, how do you feel?
Relieved.
You feel relieved?
No, it was, it was good, I had fun. This was a fun conversation.
That's important, that really is.
And we addressed a lot of, I think, important issues, even at the, kind of the grassroots level for the city and the, our neighbors, right? These issues affect everybody, so I appreciate it, and I appreciate your time.
Even though I know your experience, I'll never forget my first time in these chambers. Gosh, it was probably, I don't know, probably 15 years ago, I don't remember.
If I'm going to be honest with you, though, I'm almost always nervous before I get up here, even with all the times I've done it.
Well, I, even still, I do this for a living, and you can still get a lot of nerves, and so I really try to relate because I have the same fear.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice job.
Thanks.
Okay. Really quickly, does Council want to take a five-minute?
That would be good.
We, I think everyone needs to take a five-minute break because I think people need to go to the restroom, so we will be right back, and stay with us. So we will be right back and stay with us.
Absolutely, so we're gonna go ahead and reconvene the meeting at 4:29. Reporting has been resumed and all members present, Councilmember Breck is still absent. So we're moving into our final, final interview for this, I guess, evening now. And we should be in any moment having Ms. Kathleen Taylor brought into the room.
Hi.
Hello.
How you doing?
I am so glad to be here finally.
I've asked everyone, how you feeling?
I'm good, I'm ready.
Okay, you're not nervous?
I'm good and ready.
Because I was telling them that I sometimes get anxiety whenever I public speak and this is my job, right? So, um, so I always say use that like negative energy or anxious energy or whatever comes before you and just use that to your advantage, right? So we're all gonna be up here, we're gonna be smiling at you and then we're gonna ask you some questions. And we're gonna have you open for three to five minutes, some opening statement. And then it's pretty easy, we'll just, we'll just hand you off some questions.
Okay.
So start whenever you're ready.
I'm just trying to get...
She's like, I've been ready Hillary. I've been ready for like four hours.
Whew, three, five minutes, okay. What an exciting time to live in Reno, Nevada. Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, Mr. Manager, it is truly an honor and I am humbled to be here before you today. In the last week, I've had the opportunity to work and meet my fellow applicants. And I know today you have a very challenging decision before you. I know one thing is for sure. Councilwoman Jordan left behind some very large, probably high-heeled and stylish shoes to fill. And I'm forever grateful for her service to this community. The last time I was in this room, I heard a couple of things from what you wanted in a colleague. The first one was experience. The second was somebody that you could work with. I believe I am the most qualified for this position. I have the most relevant experience out of all the applicants. Secondly, well, I guess I can expand a little bit. I believe I can walk in this door, hit the ground running today. Secondly, I've successfully built a small business for the last 25 years in public engagement, stakeholder involvement, and community outreach. A little bit about myself. Well, I was born in Northern Nevada. I'm a native. I was born in Carson Tahoe Hospital, the old one. I graduated from Carson High School. I went to the University of Nevada Reno, graduated with a degree in Journalism and Political Science. I am a mom of two children that I've raised in this community that I'm very proud of. I have a small business called Taylor Made Solutions. I'm a woman-owned DBE disadvantaged business enterprise. And I work on major infrastructure projects in the region. I've worked on every project in Northern Nevada. My first project was the Reno Retract Project, where I had the opportunity to walk downtown in Ward Five and meet all the stakeholders, facilitate meetings, bring them to the table, engage them with construction operations, and work through the challenges together. The great thing about that project is I still have those meaningful relationships today. Twenty years later, I was pregnant with my first daughter walking down Keystone. It was fantastic. In 2012, I ran for the out-large position unsuccessfully. Ever since then, I have been in service to the city of Reno. I'm a graduate of the Reno Citizens Institute, the Reno Sparks Leadership Program. I had the opportunity to sit on your Reno Planning Commission, your Regional Planning Commission, your Building Enterprise Funding Advisory Committee, BFAC. That's a mouthful to say. And then I got to do it again recently at the Planning Commission, Regional Planning Commission, and most recently as the Chairwoman of the Reno Planning Commission. I know the Reno, Reimagine Reno Master Plan. I use it every single day with the Planning Commission and making decisions. I know Title 18, again, use it every day when I, with the Planning Commission decisions. I was part of the team that worked on the code update recently. And we still have some more work to do. As a matter of fact, there might be an agenda item tonight on the Planning Commission about the code update. But we're getting there. I also was part of the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan Update. We're also in the process of developing a, developing a natural resource plan that I'm part of, that I voted to approve and support. I'm extremely excited to be here finally today and I look forward to answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Good job. Okay, I'm gonna send it over to Vice Mayor Devon Reese. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Taylor, thank you so much for being here. It's been a pleasure to get to know you through this process. I didn't know that we knew each other that well. Although I've been able to watch you operate on the Planning Commission, so very honored that you're here tonight. A number of the questions our colleagues will ask tonight will focus on constituent engagement. I'm gonna focus on a little different thing and that is really what I believe is the heart and soul of this city, which is our staff. The city of Reno has nearly 1,400 employees, representing, I think, ten bargaining units across multiple different departments. Many of those I think you've interacted with and are familiar with. But I think it is important to know that as councilmembers, we often have great ideas. Sometimes we have not-so-great ideas. And our staff really help us to carry out the policy directives. So from this side of the dais, we really owe a great deal of gratitude towards the staff members who are out there. And many of them are really focused on making us look good. I know that's a strange way to put it, but it's their effort that goes into building this community from our firefighters and police officers who are creating public safety to our sewer folks who are making sure that the toilets work when we flush them. And it's, it's pretty humbling to get to spend time with our team here at the city of Reno. The city manager manages all of those diverse interests and has a team of support too. And so I really want you to focus in your answer to my question. Just help me understand how you'll work with that diverse team to represent your ward, but also the city at large. And just maybe talk to me a little bit about your style, how you see yourself interacting with staff, that kind of thing.
But a great question. When I was walking in here this morning, I had the opportunity to meet two of your fabulous team members. And they said to me, "It's the best it's ever been here at the city of Reno." Wow, what a statement, right? I mean, that is amazing. So whatever is being done from leadership, it's working. People are happy here. I have the pleasure of working with a team of people on the Planning Commission, your Community Development Department. They are top-notch, they're experts. I use them as a resource because they are, they have the tough job. I am respectful to every single person that I come in contact with, even if there is a disagreement. And there have been times when I have not necessarily agreed with a staff report, but I ask the questions, I listen, and I get the most information I can. I am friends, personal friends, with a lot of the people that work here. Because Reno is a small community. And I've been friends with them for, for many years. We were just talking about this upstairs and for me personally, I've been in the position, I don't like using the term even "staff." I like using the word "team." I like saying, you know, Grace, tell me about what you and your team have done. I don't like addressing people that "it's just me." It doesn't, you know, mean anything different. In regional partnerships, I work with the city of Sparks Leadership. I work with Boshoe County Leadership, all on Regional Planning Commission. We're developing plans together. I have the utmost respect for anybody that walks in and out of this building. And I try to carry that out in my life too with everybody. Treat everybody with dignity and respect. And I, I've put that on the record.
All right, Councilwoman Doerr, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you so much and congratulations for being here. When I first ran for office, we ran citywide. And a big part of our job is to look at things from a citywide perspective. At the same time, we are hiring you potentially to represent a ward. And so I'd like to focus in on this Ward Five and understand from your perspective, what issues do you think are top? And what I'd like you to think about is the different areas of Ward Five. So you've got your university downtown corridor. You've got the old and new Northwest. And you have the Somerset and Verdai, which often see things similarly and sometimes when they come here, don't see things similarly. So thinking about ward-specific, we'll have more global questions later. What do you think the top issues are? And then given that there are different perspectives in the ward, it's very diverse in my opinion, how do you, we started to talk about it, how do you bring those together? Both collegially, but also with the constituents, who may or may not agree. So the top three issues, just ward-specific. And then just talk us through how you might work through those issues.
Well, I think I have a unique approach and insight into that because I have actually sat in the homes of Ward Five residents on complex, controversial, and complicated developments in, in Ward Five, particularly in the Somerset area, up in the Northwest area. And I've also had the opportunity to talk to my neighbors in downtown and talk, and see the issues that are going on there. As a region, I think growth is our number-one top concern. And I'm not, I, I think growth is, is huge for everybody and how we grow. I've said a couple of times, everybody wants to grow strategically. Everybody wants to go, grow smart. Well, what does that actually mean? So I think growth, how we manage our resources is huge. Open space, trails, connectivity. Up in the Verdai-Sumerset area, that's a top issue for them. The university, we're growing. We've always said we want to be a college town. Councilwoman Jordan really started to lay the foundation of how we connect the university to downtown. That's a huge conversation that needs to continue, I think. In downtown Reno, it's obviously near and dear to my heart. It's my backyard. I, I love the way that people are investing in our downtown. We need to make sure that with that investment, we get the amenities and the services that benefit the community the most. But I think it's moving definitely in the right direction. We have a tremendous resource with the river and that's a split between Ward One and Ward Five, obviously. But I think that we need to make sure that we're taking care of that resource. So growth also in downtown with amenities and service and public safety. And...
So, so that's great. You've mentioned several issues. So the question is, now you have this diverse ward.
Sure.
You just identified some of their top issues. The question is, if growth is coming, I guess, to downtown, how, how does the rest of your potential ward feel about that? Or if it's going out to Verdai? How, I mean, this is your business, right? Is building consensus. So I just want to get an insight into how you do it.
Well, the way I've done it in the past on the Planning Commission, on Regional Planning Commission, is kind of going back to Councilman Reese, Reese's question. I take the information that I'm giving from the experts, which are the folks here at Regional. I review that very carefully. I meet with everybody and anybody. I have an open-door policy, very transparent, inclusive, bring everybody to the table. I will go on tours with developers. I have been on tours with residents in Ward Five. And then I will make a decision based on that. I will listen to everybody. I ask questions. I'm not afraid to know what I don't know, so to speak. And I make a decision. And I've actually had to explain those decisions to the people in Ward Five about some of my, some of my votes in the downtown area and up in the Somerset area.
All right, thanks so much. Councilwoman Weber, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good to see you here. I'm usually watching you when you're leading the meetings, the Regional Planning Committee. Regional Planning, Reno Planning Commission. And I know that you just left that position before you, this was even announced. You, we had a new election of your chairman, right? Before you even knew about this position being open.
Yeah, I served my two terms and Commissioner Velto was appointed as, or selected as our new chairman.
So it's, it's great and you've done a great job as chair. And my question is about growth and I just want to throw out a couple of extras on this one. But it is, what do you believe is a, and I think you've probably even answered this, but let's go again because that's my question. What do you believe is the single most important issue facing the growth of the city of Reno? How do you plan to work with your colleagues from other wards to best consider this issue?
So I guess I, I'll just expand a little bit on the last question. I believe that we have the tools that we need for growth. We have the master plan. We have... We have the master plan. We have Title 18. We have codes. We have design standards. I think we have everything we need. We just need to make sure that we're using them. I also believe that the Regional Planning Commission is putting together a very interesting tool that is gonna help us. It's a natural resource plan, and it's a collaborative effort among all the regional, all the region. So that gives us a document of how we're looking, all the resources that we have, where we're using them, because I think the natural resources, the water, the infrastructure, the affordable housing, all types of housing, those are things that we need to look at when we're growing, how we're growing. We're running out of land. We hear that all the time. All of the easy land is gone. How do we build up while respecting our neighbors with infill development? I know Councilwoman Doer is going through some of that right now in her ward. So I think there's some challenges, but I think we have the tools, and I think we have the experts here right now. Another thing that I think we might be able to do is look at some of the regional experts in the area. I think it's important that we see what other places are doing and maybe learn and live from them, too, because we're not the only ones experiencing this. We're not, it's not unique to Northern Nevada, I don't think.
Thanks for expanding. That's good stuff. Thank you.
Councilman Delgado.
Oh, Councilman Delgado, hi.
I know we forget you're here. I'm so sorry.
That's all right. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you. Yeah, my question is, of course, it's no secret that we've just started the process, and earlier today, we had our press briefing regarding the new hiring of a police chief. What is your vision for the future policing of Reno?
That's probably my favorite question so far, because public safety, in my opinion, is our number-one priority. And based on the budgets that I'm looking at in the next year, it's this, it's this council's priority, too. We spend more than sixty percent of the budget on public safety. I had the opportunity to go on a ride-along with Officer Levy, and I asked him the same thing, Councilman Delgado. I said, "What do you want to see?" And he, I don't know if I should have used his name. I went on a ride-along with an officer with Reno Police Department. And...
I think it's okay.
Okay. He said, "We need resources. We need bodies." That was what I heard from police. That's what I heard from fire. We need more bodies. I know that we're getting more FTEs. We're not up to the number of people that we were years ago, but we're getting there, so I think that's progress in the right direction. We want to see leadership skills. We want to see somebody that is transparent and accountable. That's what I'm hearing from, from the people that I'm asking, that they want to see in a police chief. And I know we just opened up the search for that. It's kind of weird looking at you, because I'm trying to make contact, and I can't. But those are the things that I'm hearing. We, we want, we want a leader. We want somebody that is accountable. We want transparent. We want to see community policing. We want to see some progressive, outside-the-box thinking. I hope that answers your question.
That does. Thank you. You can look at Devon. He looks like me. We always get confused.
Okay, so, public safety, absolutely. I always say, "A safe city is a prosperous city." But one of the things that happened before we got elected, there was this terrible fire divorce. And now we are finally having these conversations about what regionalization looks like, what dispatch looks like. Give me sort of your thoughts on regionalizing these fire services.
Yeah, before I answer that, I, I watched the joint meeting, and from the bottom of my heart, it was so impressive, and I was so proud to be a resident, to watch everybody come to the table. Because in 2012, you know firsthand that was not the, that was not the story. So it's taken ten years for these conversations to happen. I can stand right here, right now, and tell you, I am one hundred percent behind those efforts. And I think they need to be happening, and I'm so excited for where they're going. And I appreciate the people that are in the rooms doing the hard work, because it's, it's a long road. And we're starting with dispatch, and that's something that needs, you know, we can work on that to come up with a common solution. But I'm just, I'm very excited. I'm hopeful for the way that's, that's going. So thank you all for, for being there at the table and supporting it.
Okay, I'm gonna send it back to Councilwoman Doer.
Thank you. You said two things dear to my heart, and that is, you said, "All the easy land's gone." I don't know if I coined that phrase, but I did. I think I did, about six years ago, when it, things just started getting really tough. And I said, "All the easy land's gone. We're, we're on the hills. We're in the, we're in the wet. We're in infill." Each of these put greater challenges on the developers and greater challenges on the residents, you know, to kind of move over or accommodate. And I've talked to a lot of the consultants to the developers, and they said, "They've got to step up their game." You know, the, some of the best ones in town told me, "It's, it's actually physically, mentally harder, the engineering, you know, that's associated." So given all that, you've mentioned the master plan a couple of times. And when we did do the new master plan, Reimagine Reno, what came to the top were this issue of outdoors, recreation. What do people love about Reno? That seemed to be the number one. But since we've been on council, we've been doing things like pay down debt, rebuild our fire and our police, do the hard work, and not as much be able to focus on recreation until recently. As a complement to that, and these are both quality-of-life issues, so they get maybe a little less attention, very important to our constituents, but little less attention, is another thing you mentioned, which was sustainability. And you said the natural resource plan, and I didn't, I'm so pleased that you know about that, because when I was on Regional Planning and Chair, I pushed that, that we needed to adopt one so all of the growth didn't get out in front, and we didn't have one. So I really appreciate you bringing that up. So my question is, just in terms of this recreation issue, the climate change issue, the sustainability issue, how do you think we're progressing so far? And would you explain, you know, any additional focus areas or resources you think we should bring to the table? Should we be doing more, less? Do you care about it? Is it a passion issue? Tell us a little bit about it.
Specifically for parks and recreation?
And sustainability.
And sustainability, okay. Well, I, I think I can, again, go back to the Planning Commission. I was super supportive of the sustainability piece of that, and I think it's still being worked on today. It's definitely a balance between give-and-take of developers and the community and the industry coming together and making sure that we're doing what's right for the community. So sustainability is absolutely near and dear to my heart. And when, you know, I know at the Planning Commission, the whole commission was on board with that. We had a presentation recently about Lead. Suzanne came, and we said, "Whatever you need from us, we are here." I mean, we're very limited in what we can do, but we support all of your efforts one hundred percent. The cool thing about sustainability, too, is there's a lot of funding out there to support it. So when we talk about parks and recreation, we have eighty-plus parks. And it, it kind of goes hand-in-hand with the fire stations. A fire station is great, but if you don't have bodies in it, it really doesn't do any good. So our parks are great, but if we're not maintaining them, if we don't have the bodies there, that's a challenge for us. So I've heard a couple of people talk about the Parks Master Plan that's coming up, that's gonna be finished hopefully in 2023. That's an amazing tool that we're gonna be able to use once it's completed. I've heard people talk about park districts. I'm not sure, I don't know a ton about them, but that might be a sustainability, a source of funding for, to sustain those parks and recreations. Another thing is, if we looked at innovating funding partnerships, our public-private partnerships for some of our parks and recreation, what can we do to make them energy-efficient? Which sounds weird when you're looking at a park, but when you're thinking about the lawn mowers, the cars, the bathrooms, all those things, there are things that you can do to fall into the sustainability category, where we can get funding, we can make, or matches, or we can look at how that funding, funding looks.
Let me just put it in this perspective. Often, people present it as a binary choice, you know? Development, or are we gonna do the sustainability? Sustainability costs money. The parks cost money. Is that gonna impact on developers' profit or their ability to develop a parcel? And so I guess where I'm just struggling, that's where we struggle, and that's why I'm bringing it to you. We're looking for fresh answers, is do we just say, "Well, it's gonna cost money if we require EV charging stations," or if we... I've been, lately, people have been asking me, "Why don't we do more with solar? Why, why do they do more in Southern Nevada than here?" So I'm just wondering, you know, just looking for how do we balance? I don't know the answer, but I'm just wondering on your perspective.
Do I have a little time to answer that still?
Yeah.
Um, well, you just said it. It's a balance.
Okay.
If you have a developer and you ask him to put in EV charging stations or solar, there's a cost to that. And that cost is gonna get trickled down. It's a cost for them to do that. Specifically, I think the developers pay a thousand dollars per unit now that goes into parks and eight hundred dollars per apartment. That, I don't think that has been updated in some time, so maybe that's something we need to look at. I, I think that there are different ways besides, you know, raising people's rates, that we can look at funding. But I think our Mr. Manager here has done a tremendous job of looking at budgets and finding resources. So if we're open to have those conversations and thinking outside of the box for other things, I, I think that's a good solution.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. I've asked everyone this question. I think you've already had it. If there was one policy or code that you could change, what would it be, and why?
Only one?
Only one?
No.
Yes, give us one.
One. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with something that's really topical right now, which is affordable housing. I think if we were able to advance affordable housing applicants and developers to the front of the line, assign them a planner from beginning to end to help improve and speed up that process, it would be very beneficial. I think somebody put it as a fast pass at Disneyland. If you're coming in with an affordable development, you're gonna go straight to the line. You're gonna get somebody that's gonna hold your hand through the whole entire process. And I, I think that's, that would be a good first start.
All right. I like it. Okay.
Who doesn't like Disneyland?
I hear some fans back there. I think we all are. Okay, next question, really quick. So we don't always, we don't always agree up here. You know, obviously, politics is a funny thing. And, but I also really, I kind of enjoy that. It gives you a different perspective, and I think it's important to walk away, you know, with mutual respect. And so when you leave the dais, if you were to be in this position, what does that look like to you? If you don't agree with someone or, you know, have a different philosophy when it comes to making decisions? Give me a little bit of an idea of what that looks like to you.
I think I deal with that a lot. I'm gonna use a different example than the Planning Commission, but we have disagreements all the time on the Planning Commission. Excuse me, I'm gonna call it... Commissioner Gower and I usually have very different approaches to our priorities on the Planning Commission. I could not respect that, that gentleman more. He is so knowledgeable. He's friendly. He, I talk to him constantly about his opinion, because in the end, it helps me make a better decision. On the Planning Commission recently, I was a no on a vote because I didn't understand something. And Arthur, sorry, was able to walk me through some of the things with an RTC development, and it actually made me change my mind. So I'm not afraid to reach out, to have the conversations, to get another point of view from somebody, because there are a lot of things I don't know. In my job, I do extensive public involvement, outreach, stakeholder engagement, facilitation. And when you're telling people that their business access is gonna be shut down, or they're gonna have a detour where they depend on foot traffic, you don't always get along. It's not always the best conversation. But I pride myself on having very respectful and professional relationships with all the people that I work with.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is your, your final five minutes. Go ahead and give us your closing remarks.
Okay. I'm gonna take a drink of water really quick.
Go right ahead.
I'm excited about the direction the city is heading. I want to be a champion for downtown, all our communities, for the university, for the northwest, for the old northwest, for everyone. This council has trusted me to be on your Planning Commission, trusted me to represent you at Regional Planning Commission. I've sat at the tables of Ward Five residents. I've had the hard conversations with them. I've been in the process of making decisions that weren't necessarily popular. I know what that looks like. And I talked about this a little bit. I've had to explain myself to them, and I do. I believe in what we do here. Those aren't, those aren't always easy conversations. I've also heard, I'm in the pockets of the developers. That's, couldn't be further from the truth. I recently voted down, I was the only person on the Planning Commission to vote down a development, actually in Ward Two. I was the only one that voted against that. I actually voted a development down in Ward Five. I'm not pro or in the developer's pocket. I look at everything that's before me, and I make an educated decision. I've been sued by sitting on the Planning Commission from a developer, personally. They came to my door and served me and my daughter. I know what it's like to make the hard decisions. I have the time and the dedication to be in this position. I'm ready and committed to take the next step. I want to represent my neighbors in Ward Five. I want to be their next councilwoman. I have the dedication, the time, and the energy to put into this position. Like I said before, I have the experience. I can walk in here and start working, well, maybe after 7:00 PM, if you don't mind. I appreciate your time, and I thank you for your consideration.
All right. Is that, that's it?
That's it.
Okay. How do you feel? You made it?
I want to put on different shoes.
I certainly know what that feels like. Absolutely. Well, I just want to say, honestly, remarkable job. Remarkable job from all the candidates. It, this is always so hard. It is so, so tough. And Reno is really small. That's another thing, like, you know, there were people that were here today that I went to high school with, elementary school with. Hello, I'm glad you're back. Did you go get a pizza? You do? No? Oh, okay, good. You got some swag. But I'm, I'm so impressed with all the dedication that you guys have shown, and really, like, there hasn't been a lot, long, a lot of time to get involved, but every single one of you were just, you were gracious and kind and thoughtful, reached out to constituents. I mean, yes, go, go right ahead. I, I honestly, it's a very, very, very tough decision. I think all three of you are tremendous, tremendous, and need to serve the city in some capacity, because I, I couldn't be more proud. And, I mean, ugh, these are always the most difficult, difficult decisions. We've done this three times. And, and you know, that's, no, we've done it maybe four now, because we had a judge. And sometimes it, you know, it doesn't turn out the way that you want it. But I just want each of you to know, you have done a phenomenal job, and you should be incredibly proud, incredibly proud. And there's a lot of people that are watching this, and I think you've probably made a lot of new friends and met community members that you didn't even know, and have supporters now that you probably didn't know. So I'm just, I'm really, really impressed. Okay, Madam Clerk, how do you want us to proceed? Do you want us to do it like we've always done it, or do you have a list?
So in the past, when we have done the interviews, there's just been deliberation amongst the board. We haven't done a scorecard. However, if you would like to, I'm happy to generate one, super-quick-like. to generate one, super quick, like. Um, I think negotiating that with Councilmember Delgado will be just a tad more interesting on the technology side.
Okay.
But, yeah, generally speaking, it has just been an open discussion and a selection based on that.
I thought that's what we did in the past, too, so that everyone can kinda see across the board. Okay. Let's do that? Are you okay with that?
Just an open deliberation, so...
That sounds good.
The discussion happens, and then if we can't come to a consensus, then we can go to a scorecard, and I'll start working on something now.
Are you good with that?
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Who do I, who wants to start? Council, is Councilman Delgado?
Yes.
Because you're not in the room!
That's perfect.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
He's like...
I'm really happy to pick things off. I think it's just general open discussion, as you stated, all three candidates were amazing, and I think we could all go home at night, and I think the community could go home feeling better about the future leaders of our community, especially Ward Five. So congratulate all of them, especially their families, for allowing them to go through all this process. It's, it's a different thing once you're out there and you're open to being criticized for your thoughts, for your leadership, and for wanting to do better. And so, congratulations to all of them, and again, thank you to their families. You know, just diving deep into it, I believe, and listening to all of them, I think often about Councilwoman Jordan and her advocacy for the diverse, different groups that she advocated for, and I think that was shared across the council with respect to how diverse Ward Five is. She did a tremendous job, and she was, um, supported overwhelmingly on three different occasions by the voters, Ward Five, for the amount of work that she did. I also think and thought very thoughtfully about how each candidate answered the questions that was, that were before them. Many of the questions were answered, and like any candidate going through a campaign, very thirty thousand, one hundred thousand foot level, because it's new to a lot of folks. And so I started thinking more about the tough work that's happening in Ward Five, a lot of the development projects that are happening in Ward Five, and how much we need to get people off and running. What brought me to, uh, Neoma again, Councilwoman Jordan, and, and the work that's on the Planning Commission. You know, it's made different ways, that's a gatekeeper position for many of us on the council, it goes to the commission before it comes to us. They've done a tremendous amount of tedious yet extremely important work on the commission side. They've looked at the overlays, they've looked at new plans, and they've deliberated, and not only with the constituents, but also amongst themselves, and also us. And so, just kinda chewing all that, I'd like to hear what the rest of the council is, but, um, those things stood out to me pretty heavily with respect to all three candidates.
All right, thank you so much. So, I guess, is it safe to say we would just deliberate, and then you want us, each one of us, give you the selection? Is that correct?
Exactly, so I just need a motion for the appointment, so you're free to deliberate amongst each other, and then the, the real thing I'm looking for is just the motion of the selection and the appointment to that seat, if there will be one today.
Okay. All right, make it a motion.
Well, I was gonna deliberate.
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
That's what we were just invited to do. I just, I wanna do a huge shout out to the three of you. You came from thirty-six, and you're down to three, and you all represent, I think, some of the best of what we have to offer in our city. You all came at this a different way, and I read all the materials prior to, and listened to part of the online, I wish I had a chance to listen to the whole, but I didn't, and then I took a lot of notes, and I paid a lot of attention to what you were bringing to the table in terms of your answers, but your perspectives. And what I'm looking for in a colleague is some independent thinking, openness to, I think you said it Kathleen, being, hearing from all sides. I think all of you said a version of that. Being able to build that consensus, I heard that from Alex a lot, from Elliot, I heard a lot of study, you called it not town hall, but listening session, so I, I heard a lot of themes that, that I really appreciated from the three of you. And that is, in fact, the goodness of your answers is what's making this incredibly difficult, frankly, for me. Because you're all bringing something new to the table that we don't have today, you know, some different experiences. And that's what I'm weighing and trying to balance myself. And if I could have three new council colleagues, that's what I'd be having. Why not? No, you get to stay two.
We do have three seats here.
I know, three open seats. So, I mean...
We can make a motion, they can't come back.
That's how, that's how I feel about it, is that, um, I think you're all, each of you are bringing something unique to the table that we haven't seen before, and that's what I really, really like, and you all know, I didn't wanna have to make this decision for the Ward Five voters. I, I wanted, you know, you know, a different process, but we're here today, and I've gotta, we five have to select for that whole community. So I just wanted to thank you for putting yourselves out there, for doing an amazing job, all three of you, and like, like Mr. Delgado, I'm gonna listen a little bit too to my colleagues, because I gotta tell you, each of you gave a best answer to, to all of our answers. In other words, you might have shined Alex in one thing, you Kathleen another, you Elliot in a different aspect of this, and that is what is making this incredibly challenging. But I know we're gonna find a good colleague, no matter what we end up with here today, I'm very, very positive about that.
You know, one of the things I, I wanna point out is that Reno is very small, we all know this, right? But what is even smaller is sort of the government circles that we are in. I have had the opportunity to work with all three of you, and, you know, I don't know you well, but I've supported you, you have supported me in a lot of initiatives, and that's what happens whenever you live in a small city and in government. And I wanted to say, like, honestly, I've been very proud to do that because there has been, you know, some negative talk, I can't remember, someone mentioned it, said, oh, I think it was you Kathleen talked about being corrupt. And so I wanna really address that, because there were some things, oh, you know, whether it was Alex or Elliot, or because of what you do, you know, doing government affairs, or Kathleen Taylor, and, you know, I don't know you personally, I've worked with you professionally and have a great deal of respect for you, and I've been supported by you and vice versa, I wanna address that. That does not make someone corrupt, that makes a city and what we do sort of a smaller environment, but also, I'm proud to say that, because, of course, people will say things about, oh, you know, even a council member, to be honest with you, was really disheartening, and I wanted to address that, because that couldn't be further from the truth, and it's incredibly difficult decision, very, very hard, because I think all three of you are incredibly talented and capable, and what I would ask, please, please stay, stay engaged. I think actually, all three of you, I'm probably speaking to a broken record, because all three of you have shown that you will stay engaged, because here we are in political season, and some people only come out whenever it's time to run, and they don't really stay in and stay committed. All three of you have done that, and that is impressive, and it shows your dedication to this community. So, please know, this is very, very difficult, but I have to encourage you to please, please stay engaged, because we need people like you, you, you are our future. All right, anything else? Because then, we're gonna do a motion.
Well, I'm happy to say a few comments, and then we'll see what we can get to. First of all, I'd like to sort of address all three of you folks who are here today, what a privilege it is to spend time with you. I came to this body the same way. I was appointed to the body in 2019, so I know what it's like to sit up in that room, come down the stairs, bare your soul a bit here in the audience, and to quote the amazing Ted Lasso, I feel like we fell out of a lucky tree and hit every branch on the way down, ended up in a pool of cash and Sour Patch Kids. Because you all have shown something incredibly thoughtful and brought some different perspectives. Each of you has, I think, both things that you're strong in and things that you would need some work on, I think we all do, I mean, that's the nature of it. I certainly did not know everything about what I was about to get into in 2019 that I know now, and, you know, we never, none of us have a time machine to go back and tell our younger self those things that we could have done better, differently, more. I think too, for my part, the thing that I have observed about this body is each one of us probably walks in imagining that we're one in a million, but sometimes you forget that you're one of seven, you know, and you're on a team, and this is a team that I find a great deal of support from family, countenance. We don't always agree, and sometimes we disagree in ways that are difficult and painful, and, you know, we have caused each one of us, you know, some sleepless nights over an issue. But at the end of the day, we come back to that central theme, which you all have expressed very politely and graciously today, which is that Reno is worth fighting for. Reno is a very special place for all of us, and that's why we want to serve and be here. With regard to how I observe each of the candidates, you know, if I can just be more specific, my ultimate decision has changed over the course of this period of time, a couple of times, as I've got to know people, as I've taken input from the community, even as just sat here. So, you know, what you read on Facebook and, you know, the Twitterverse is hardly ever true, I think Mayor says it often, that she never knew how beautiful, skinny, and smart she was till she got on the internet, and, and sometimes I think that's true for all of us. Well, we, we know those are not true things, but I say that so that you all understand that it's a range of emotions for us on this side, too, and that we have, each one of us have to bring our skill and expertise to it. For my part, I am ultimately going to turn to the person who I think has the most experience and is able to most quickly get up to speed on this job. There's not a lot of onboarding that goes on, I think, you know, they sort of pushed me into an office on day one and said, we'll have fun. I'm hopeful that we'll change that, but in that regard, based on the answers that were given today and, and the process, yeah, I, I'm excited about the prospect of adding a new colleague. So I do wanna hear from our last colleague on the dais before, trying to make an effort at a motion, so, but Councilmember Weber, is that okay, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, I just wanted to have the opportunity, I, I feel honored to be even, be able to be here, and to be helping to select this person. I think what you had to go through is the hardest thing, it's harder than running for election, you know, for office, so...
It's pretty hard, I don't know.
It's pretty hard, but I think what you have to go through, I can remember, I'm sorry, I'm making everyone laugh, I mean, maybe that's a good thing. But I can remember when Councilman Reese was running, or was in this process with a lot of other folks, and I just, I just felt the pressure of what it was for you to have to sit in the rooms for hours, and I have to say, it, it has to be the hardest thing that you, you go through, it's, it's a job, you're running, you're running for the job. So, anyway, what I was so impressed by, and I think I, I might have mentioned it earlier, but when I was able to attend the two public meetings, and just see the three of you up there, talking with each other, sharing, saying to each other, oh, that was a great idea, you, you did this, or this was what I saw in you, and I just appreciated that from all of you, and then for the public to be able to see that, see how they would be talking to their constituents and working with their constituents, I just thought that was the greatest. And I think that it's a really difficult decision, and I, I just wanna say to you all, don't go away, and I don't think anyone of you will, and unfortunately, only one person gets it, and I, I, I just wanna say to each one of you that, I, this was such a blessing for me to be able to have you in front of us, and thank you, and for what you do for your constituents, and what you want to do for your constituents. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Yeah, you never know, this is the fourth time we're doing this, so, seriously, right? So opportunities... Right. Well, and that, that's another thing that I wanna address, was, you know, some of the negativity surrounding this, no one had any idea that Councilwoman Jordan would be leaving. No one had any idea at all, and it's been hard to lose her. She was a tremendous colleague, and was always respectful, and, I mean, it's only been a couple meetings, but I miss her already, she has done a phenomenal job in the city and cared about Ward Five so very much, so passionate about it, so. Okay, I'm gonna send it to you, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, it would be my honor to nominate Kathleen Taylor to the appointment for the Ward Five vacancy.
And I would second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
I wanted to say, I, I think it is a good choice, and I think Kathleen, you impressed me with the specificity of your answers, your experience shows, I do believe you would hit the ground running. I think your two partners to the, to your right also could do the job, and I also think they need a little bit more seasoning, frankly, you know, to get up to what you've experienced on the Planning Commission, frankly. I would be, I'm looking for a partner, I look for partnerships here in all my colleagues, and I think that you would be a good advocate, and I would learn from you. And I also think that my colleague here to my right told me earlier today, that one of the ways that he came up to speed was my coaching. He told me that I, I helped onboard him and mentored him to be a colleague, to learn this job, because I had a few more years on him, and it is a very challenging, challenging, challenging job. Every decision that we make, you know, has an up and downside, and people are happy with us, people are sad with us constantly, and you kinda have to have kind of a sense of self to be able to get through that, you know, to, to live through that, and know you're not gonna make all the people happy all the time, that's just what we live with. And maybe none of the people happy some of the time, you know? You, you said, you said a few no's sometimes, you've had that experience. So anyway, I just wanted to put that out there on the record, you've impressed me through this process, as I have been impressed by your colleagues here that have also applied, but I think that you do have that experience to hit the ground running, so I appreciate that motion.
All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you so much. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Tough.
We didn't know about standing up.
I was nervous for all three of you. You just feel that, right? How do you feel? Do you feel okay? All right, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna send it back to you.
Kathleen, there's still time.
Three minutes on the clock. Well, and I wanna do a secondary shout out to both Alex and Elliot, because you've become critical to us, I, I feel like I know you so much better after going through this process, and I'm gonna be depending on relying on you even more, to advocate a perspective, to give us your insight, to share with us what you have to offer. This is not an empty thing when the mayor says stay involved, you both have jobs that keep you involved, and I'm, I'm gonna be leaning on both of you, and I think you're, I think Kathleen will as well, because I think she's gotten to know you and learn about your issues and your perspective, so, I just, I don't think those are empty words, like, oh, stay involved, I, I already think you are involved, and I'm gonna be counting on you.
I remember how hard it was, I mean, because I've had it where my choice did not chosen, I think we've all probably been there, but I remember Andrew Disz was an incredibly great candidate, remember when Andrew Disz came before us?
I do know, yeah.
He was incredible, he stayed involved, he's doing great things, and he's making a huge impact in our community in other ways, and so, don't, don't discredit that at all, because we really do, we really need you guys, and if we had three more seats up here, there's still time, then it would be hands down a very easy decision. It's, this is never, ever, ever... It's, this is never, ever, ever easy, ever.
Well, it's just about one of the hardest things that we've gone through in my mind.
It is. It's really tough, really, really tough. So, okay, Madam Clerk. What do we have to do next?
We're going to swear Kathleen in today.
I don't believe how fast that is. Okay.
We need final public comment?
Read. Do we take public comment before that, or?
No.
No, okay. All right. Wow, that's kind of scary.
Ms. Taylor, your children can certainly join you while you're being sworn in.
Nice to meet you.
I, Kathleen Taylor. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend the Constitution.
Protect and defend the Constitution.
And government of the United States.
And government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
The Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Reno.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Reno.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign.
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law.
Of any state notwithstanding.
Of any state notwithstanding.
And that I am not under.
And that I am not under.
Any direct or indirect.
Any direct or indirect.
Obligation to vote for.
Obligation to vote for.
Appoint or elect.
Appoint or elect.
Any person to any office.
Any person to any office.
Position or employment in the city of Reno.
Position or employment in the city of Reno.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully perform.
Well and faithfully perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of City Councilmember Ward Five.
Of City Councilmember Ward Five.
On which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter. So help me God.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna send it back to you for public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we're moving into closing public comment. I have no comment here in front of me. However, if you are in the Zoom meeting and would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time. For the record, I would like to note that we did receive eight additional comments, some of which were either general in nature or additional comments in favor of any of these three candidates. Those have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are part of the official record. We do have one public commentator via Zoom that would like to speak, which is Tom Dunn.
Okay.
And at that point, we'll transition into voicemails, of which we have four. All right, Tom, please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Taylor, for the record, Tom Dunn, representing the men and women of the Reno Firefighters Association. First of all, congratulations to your appointment as Reno City Councilwoman. You do have some very incredibly large heels to fill. We really appreciate the dedication and commitment that former Councilwoman Jordan has given to the city council. We'd like to congratulate all three of the candidates today. It takes a lot of grit, integrity, determination, and drive to run for public office today. And on behalf of the Reno Firefighters Association, we look forward to working with all three of you in the future as we address the needs and goals of our community. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, is that our final, final public comment?
That is our final public comment. We have four voicemails.
Okay, go right ahead.
Good morning, Mayor Shivi and members of the city council. My name is Charles Oglibot. I have been a resident of Ward Five since 1995. I'm calling you regarding your difficult task coming up of appointing who is going to represent Ward Five. The three candidates are all highly qualified, but I think that Elliot Malin is going to be the one who's going to represent Ward Five's voice in the council. I have been, like I said, I have been a resident of Ward Five for more than twenty years. I have never seen a person who represents me come in, come into my neighborhood and ask what our concerns are. For the past twenty, more than twenty years, I felt that our voice is not heard in any level of the government. And Elliot Malin is going to be the one who's going to do that. I'm not gonna talk about his professional strengths. I'm pretty sure he has done a really good job in selling himself and all the documents that he has given to you all. So I will be speaking about one thing, one thing alone, on a more, more personal level. I know that Elliot Malin is going to be willing to come down to our neighborhood and talk to us and figure out what the issues are or our concerns are, and represent that in the city council and do everything that he can to work with everybody to get that through. In the end, he is going to be able to let all of you know what our concerns are, Ward Five's voice. He's gonna represent that in the council. And in the end, he is going to be willing to work with all of you to do what's best for the whole city. I am sure about that, because it is in his nature. He is going to, going to not be able to help himself do that. So, so if you are going to consider someone who is going to represent Ward Five's voice, it should be Elliot Malin. He is going to do a great job. He is going to be able to, to represent our voice and do it really well. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it. Good luck to the task that you have today. Please choose why.
Hi there, this is Craig Stevenson, and I'm just calling to show my support for Elliot Malin for the appointment to the Ward Five vacancy. He's far and wide the best choice for this position. I mean, he's lived in the, in the ward much, much longer than the other candidates that have been selected. And I'd just be remiss if I didn't point out the fact that, you know, he has been there the longest and he has been open with the community. You know, in meeting with Mr. Malin, I've just been very impressed by him, and I just wanted to show my support for him. And, you know, be sure that he got the opportunity here. I know that he's gonna be great for the ward and, you know, living there the longest, being with the community. It's really important to the small Reno community that we have support from, from people like Elliot Malin. And I just, I think he's gonna be the best fit. So, you know, I'm hopeful that you make the right decision, make the right choice, and appoint him to this vacancy here to represent us here in Ward Five. Thank you very much for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Guy Moreno, and I am a resident of Ward Five in the city of Reno. I just wanted to take this time to commend Elliot Malin for taking the time to run for the city council position open in our ward. And I highly recommend that he fill that vacancy. Elliot is a hard worker, honest, true, and capable of serving the city of Reno. I hope that he will take my comment into consideration. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Thomas Hodges, and I support Elliot Malin. He has been involved in the ward and the city of Reno. And he has given back to our state and community, and he is just a great and honest person. Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comment.
Okay, thank you so much. I would love to ask Councilwoman Taylor if you would join us up at the dais, and you can lead us into our final motion.
Assuming that things don't change, looking forward to sitting next to you, Councilwoman Taylor, since they haven't left me.
Someone, I know, favorite motion. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Taylor, for the record, I move to adjourn.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I always want to know, if I don't accept the motion, what happens? Do I get to keep you here all day, all night? Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks.